Right now? Yeah.
It's kind of interesting. You two look exactly alive. I thought you were the lawyer. So I looked over there and I came in here.
Thank you.
Exactly alive. You know? Excellent. That's interesting. Oh, you two do know each other. You look very... How are you, Gloria?
How have you been all this time?
I've been good. You've been good. Been busy, but... As long as I'm busy, it's getting better. But I'm fine today.
We already have a copy of that.
Oh, this is the update.
Oh.
As of what? As of week one.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Keep it before, keep it before us.
Right. Show you who's in the lead and stuff like that.
I can't believe they have a meeting scheduled for nine in the morning. I thought it was today. You know, I couldn't understand the invite that went out. It looked like it was today, and I'm like, are they crazy? No, the meeting is Thursday. That's here. It's the third. It's here. It's Thursday, but his meeting is at the park is tomorrow at nine. I don't know. I just think we need to get on the same page. They're new, so we kind of have to... It's kind of crazy right now. Oh, really? Well, you know, when COVID first hit, I had to buy a new laptop because I had the same problem with the computer I had in 2020. I could not hear... I could see the people, but they could not hear me. And I couldn't, you know... And I could not figure out why my computer wouldn't show. I ended up having to buy a new laptop. Yeah. Yeah, you probably do. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. We're getting there. You're back. Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
I saw you dancing at your Halloween party with that little boy, and he was so cute.
He beat him. I already paid him. He told y'all, stop bringing up this guy. He was like...
He was so cute.
I already paid him. He felt really good about it. Listen, it was so great. If you would have came, you would have had so much... He had a dog going to give you something. They all...
No, I thought you were just singing, and he just kind of impromptu got up there with you. Oh, that was a... Okay, I didn't realize that.
All right.
Yeah, he was pretty good. I'm sorry. I'm sure he didn't sing as good as you did.
All right. Ooh. Ah, I think I'd underestimated today. I was looking. I think I'd underestimated today.
Underestimated?
Yeah, I think we're gonna be... We might be here a little bit longer than...
Welcome to your first city council meeting.
Nine o'clock.
It's gonna be long.
Hmm?
Hey, Councilman. How are you? Hi, how are you?
How are you, sir?
You been all right?
Yeah, trying to stay out of trouble.
Good.
Not doing a good job, but yeah, try. All right. There's that.
I'm winning.
You who?
I'm winning.
I've got forty-eight percent. That's the highest.
In what?
In this voter challenge.
No, I got fifty... Oh, you're talking about... In eighteen, I had forty-seven percent.
Twenty-twenty-two percent.
Twenty-one percent. Yeah, you're doing pretty well. I think I'm kind of... I'm the lowest.
Well, you're a five in forty-one.
You're not the lowest. It will always be me.
No. Mikell?
Mikell, you're D... You're two?
D-two.
No, the lowest is five. It says five.
The lowest is forty-one point nine.
Yeah. Forty-two percent?
D-three is mayor.
Oh, okay.
Called and ordered the meeting today. The invocation will be done by Mr...
Microphone.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
We're leaving a little bit further.
Thank you. Calling the order. Invocation, Mr. Parker... Councilman Parker?
Thank you, Madam President. And then, Councilman. Our invitation will be given today by Pastor Catherine Desro of the Boulevard Church.
Before I start today, I'm taking the place of someone who was asked and invited to come tonight and was planning to. And yesterday morning, received that call that nobody wants, that his son, his daughter-in-law, his grandson, who was five, and the driver of the other car killed. The son is barely alive. They have lifelighted him to a different... They're on their way to Nevada to be with their son. Everybody else is dead on the scene. Just a terrible, horrible thing. So when you think about local pastors, they're people too. His name is... Excuse me. His name is Robert Rego. Everybody knows him as Rego Estrada. Lives here in Pontiac. Fine man of God. Going through a really, really tough patch. But the son's name was Mark Estrada. And this little five-year-old and his mommy, all gone. So, if we could pray. Father, tonight we come to you. We ask, Lord, that you be with this family that is grieving tonight. We don't know your plans, but in the natural, this one's hard, Lord. And all the people in Pontiac that are going through their own times of hard times and tough times. We don't always know why, but we know that you're in control. And so tonight, Lord, as we come as a council and the public of Pontiac, we ask that you be in control here too as well. May each decision that's made bring honor and glory to you, bring the city closer together, and, Lord, may we once again be a place where you reign supreme, for we ask it in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. We now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we now remain standing for a moment of silence of the loved ones that we've lost in this community and your loved ones at home? A moment of silence. Thank you. Roll call.
Harrington. Goodman.
Here.
James.
Here.
McGinnis. Nicholson.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Rutherford.
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a call.
Thank you so much. Can I make the author... Can I get an authorization to excuse council members Carrington and President Pro... Excuse me. President McGinnis and President Pro Tim Carrington?
So moved. Support.
It's been moved in second. Roll call.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Five yeas, no nays.
Okay. I need an amendment to and to approve the tonight's agenda.
I make a motion.
Support.
It's been moved by Catherine James... Excuse me. Councilwoman James has been seconded by Councilman Parker. Is there anything that needs to be amended on the schedule tonight? Anything that needs to be added? Seeing none?
No. Madam Chair.
Yes.
So actually, items two and three need to be removed from the agenda and replaced by a new item two. So the purchasing ordinance was combined. There are two proposed revisions to the purchasing order... I mean, purchasing ordinance to eliminate competitive bidding for purchases less than $5,000 and to amend the purchasing ordinance to clarify certain deficiencies and procedures. So the city attorney combined those two amendments into one document, which you have before you.
President, just to give you... We were trying to... Could you explain that one more time so that you've been brought up to speed, please? Thank you.
The amendment?
Yes, the amendment.
Was there a motion in a second yet for the amendment?
No, there has not been a...
Is there a main motion to approve the agenda already?
Yes.
Okay. So is there a motion to amend the agenda to make those changes for the first reading of the two ordinances and make it into one?
I make a motion.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call on that amendment to the agenda. Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The amendment passes. Are there any additional amendments, additions, corrections for the agenda? Hearing none, roll call on adoption of the agenda. The agenda as amended. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The amended agenda is approved. We'll proceed accordingly. And to confirm, we were able to excuse council members for personal reasons?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to adopt this evening's consent agenda?
So moved.
Support. It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Goodman. It includes this evening, three sets of city council meeting or subcommittee meeting minutes and the City of Pontiac activity... City of Pontiac Fund activity for September 2022. Roll call on adoption and approval of the consent agenda. Clerk Doyle.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. The consent agenda is adopted. We move to our one special presentation this evening. Deputy Mayor Kalphani Stevens on the Pontiac General Operating and Fire Services Millage Restoration and the State's Headley Amendment. You have the floor, sir.
All right, well, good evening, council, mayor, citizens. Tonight, we're going to talk about the proposal that is on everyone's ballot. It is the Headley Amendment, commonly called the Headley rollback. Tonight's presentation will be just the facts to let you know exactly what the Headley Amendment is, how it operates, and how it would affect the citizens of Pontiac if this were to take place. All right, so the Headley Amendment is a state constitutional amendment passed in 1978. And essentially, what it does... I mean, it does a lot of things, but the thing that is important for us to think about what it does tonight is it forces governments to move down their millage every year if there is a regular increase in property values. So generally speaking, every year, property values go up. And when that happens, just because of regular inflation, municipalities are forced to reduce their millage so that we only collect as much money as we would have collected last year, say for the fact that there was inflation. Next slide. And so what happens is we can come all the way down here to the formula. And all of this is available on the city's website. So you can go to the city's website, and you can download these slides to read every piece of it word by word. But what happens when property appreciates, and we look at that formula, we take last year's taxable value minus losses. And we'll talk about what losses are in the next slide. And we divide that by this year's taxable value minus additions. And we'll talk about what those additions are in the next slide. That number will give us a percentage. And that percentage is how much we have to reduce the city's operating millage by every year. Okay, and so what are subtractions? When we look at last year's taxable value for the city, we have to take away any property that was demolished. We have to take away any property that was made tax exempt and any property that just lost value in the market naturally. And when we look at this year's taxable value, we need to take out additions. Additions are any new construction, any property that should have been on last year's taxable schedule but wasn't, and property that was previously exempt. And then also, if a former property had been destroyed by fire or flood or other catastrophe and then replaced, we don't... We have to take out that replacement value. Next slide. So let's look at a real-life example. We're using twelve mills and a taxable value of $10,000. And let's say that the year's inflation rate was three percent. So how would this actually work? It would actually work so the taxable value was $10,000, and there were no add... There were no subtractions that year. Because we're using very, very simple math, because we just want to get the point across. And if the inflation rate was three percent, we take that $10,000 and we multiply it by 1.03. Now, that property increased in value by 10%. So this year, that same property has a taxable value of $11,000, and there were no additions. No new property was built. So we're gonna divide the ten... Well, we're gonna multiply the 10,000 by 1.03 and divide that by 11,000. So $10,300 divided by $11,000 means that in that particular year, the city would have had to reduce its operating millage by .1637%. Next slide. So this is how it actually works. We're gonna take... We're gonna find our new millage rate by multiplying the old millage rate by that fraction that we just found. So in this new year, our millage rate is going to be 11.2363 instead of 12. So we should have levied 12 mills, but because of the Headley Amendment, because we had appreciation that was greater than the assigned value of inflation, we have to roll back how much money we're able to levy. So how much money did the city lose because of the Headley Amendment in this very simple example? In this very simple example, the city should have levied $132, but because of Headley, it only levied $123.60. So we lost $8.04. There are over 23,000 parcels in the city of Pontiac. So in a very simple example like this, if you just multiplied that by the 23,000, that number becomes quite large. Next slide. So exactly how is this affecting the city of Pontiac? In 1978, the Headley Amendment went into effect. Shortly thereafter, the city of Pontiac ratified a new charter. And in that charter, the citizens of the city said that they wanted to levy a total of 12 mills to operate the city. Ten general operating mills and two mills specific towards the fire department. So the citizens... And you can find that in the city charter in section 5.205. So the citizens of the city said that they want 12 mills levied so that we can actually provide the services that they have tasked us with providing. The last time the city levied its full 12 mills was 1998. Unfortunately, in this chamber, the slide doesn't show very well. But in 1998, we levied 12 mills, and we had a base taxable value... And I'm blind. We had a base taxable value of about $852,000. Now, every year, from that year going forward, we had additions and subtractions. Buildings were built. Buildings were torn down. Life became complicated. But you can see that the taxable value was rising, and the millage rate was falling every year. And then that last column shows you the cumulative effect of the Headley Amendment in each year. So of course, in that first year, there was no loss to Headley because we levied the full mill. But every year, we lost more and more and more. Next slide. You can see there, right in the middle, it actually began in around 2006. But from 2006 through 2017, there was no millage rollback due to Headley. We still had losses because we were not levying the full amount because of the previous effects. And you would say, well, Kalphani, or, you know, Deputy Mayor Stevens, why were we not lowering the Headley every year in those years? Well, if you remember, that corresponds with the Great Recession. And so until we came through and started gaining back all the losses from that, there was a while before we actually had to start Headley rollbacks again. But you will see, fortunately, unfortunately, however you want to look at it, in 2018, we started rolling back again all the way up through this year, 2022, where you can see that since 1998, the city of Pontiac has lost over $15 million due to a forced rollback of our operating millage. So over that period of time, there was $15 million that was not spent on roads, not spent on parks, not spent on blight reduction, not spent on upkeep of this building that we are in. I can go on and on on the things that $15 million were not spent on because of the Headley rollback. A rollback is moving our tax millage down because our property values went up. This slide just, again, goes through what I just said, and I think that might be the last slide in the presentation. So, Council President, I just wanted to give the factual information about what is being forced to happen to the city's operating millage every year. And what is on the ballot is asking the citizens of Pontiac, do they want to restore the operating millage that the citizens decided they wanted to levy in 1982? And with that, if the council has any questions?
Thank you. And to reiterate, these slides and information you stated is available on the city's website?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you shared that last week as well. Thank you. Councilman Goodman, you have the floor.
So just for my own sake here, have you guys done the math on, let's say that if we were to... If the city were to pass... Citizens were to pass this, and, you know, next year, we have the full 12 mills. Have we done the math in terms of how much additional money the city would be able to collect in terms of operating?
Yes, that's a great question. And that is actually part of the information that is on the ballot. In the language of the ballot, approximately $1.2 million is what would be collected in that first year. And I also need to say that the ballot says, hey, we're going to restore our millage to its former amount. But it is still subject to the Headley Amendment. And so that first year, we will raise $1.2 million approximately. That's what we are estimating. But that next year, if property values increase more than inflation, Headley will start rolling it back again.
Yeah. And then, so the second question I have is kind of more like a clarifying one to help us along the math of how much money this is.
Yes.
Because I know, like, the example that you gave, you used the taxable value of like 10 grand.
Yes.
There is, I don't think, a single house in the city that is a sitting, functional house that has a property value of 10 grand.
Great, 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 great point. And so what we did was we had the treasurer look at the... And, you know, when you talk about average, it's a very difficult word, right? So you have the mean, the median, and the mode, right? And so when we say average, generally what we mean is actually the number that occurs most frequently. And so we had the treasurer look for the average taxable value of a property in the city of Pontiac, and that was about $30,000. So on a home that has a taxable value of about $30,000, we're talking about approximately a $30 to $40 increase in your taxes year to year. And so I know a lot of people are gonna say, that's impossible. My house cannot be... Only have a $30,000 taxable value. Well, it can. And the reason why it can, if you go back to a presentation that I did back, I want to say in April, we talked about the Headley Amendment, and we also talked about Proposal A. And the way Proposal A works is if you buy a property, that property gets a taxable value assigned to it. And if the value of that property drops, the taxable value drops. And the taxable value of a property can only increase by 5% or the rate of inflation, whichever is lower. So if you take an item like the Great Recession, and we looked at the tax... If you can go back to the slides. And we looked at the taxable values across the city of Pontiac. We went from being over $1 billion in taxable value in the city. Yeah. So we went from being over $1 billion in taxable value. Go forward a slide. And we dropped all the way down to 600,000?
700 million.
I'm sorry, 600 million. So half, right? So we lost half of the taxable value in the city. And every year, we can only go up 5% or the rate of inflation unless you sell that property. So it takes a long time for a property... So it takes a long time for a property to regain its taxable value. It may have a larger sale of, sale value. You may be able to sell it in the open market for quite, quite a bit more than that, but the actual assessed tax value can be quite low. And so that's the situation. A lot of homeowners in the city of Pontiac bought their homes before the Great Recession. Or they bought their homes before the taxable values regained from the Great Recession. So their taxable values are set at very, very low rates.
Thank you. That's all the question I have for right now. Was it Councilman Nicholson? Anyone else with further discussion? All right. Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Stevens for your presentation. We move now to recognition of elected officials. Are there any current elected officials that wish to be recognized? Want to salute Pontiac Library Board Trustee H. Bill Maxi, who's with us this evening? If you'd like to speak on the library, you have the floor. If you'd like to, yes, now's the time.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. President. From the library board, we are having coordinators that's going to be explaining about the paperwork that Angela Powell passed out. Homeowners who lost their homes between the years of 2008 and 12. We have the paperwork and have duplicated the applications. I found two people today, one under 50, one 65, who lost their homes and tried to call the county and was put on hold on hold. We're saying, we have people that are responsible enough to help you. It is not a meeting. Come through the library between the hours of 12 and 2:00. And that will extend down to the boarding center at 12 o'clock. Not a meeting. We will be sitting there to help you with that package. The package is about 15 pages long and many seniors can't navigate. And without being a senior, it is hard to navigate. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other requests for recognition of elected officials? Hearing none, we move now to agenda address. Opportunity for residents to speak for two minutes to, uh, address items on the agenda. Uh, it, sign up ahead of time. So Councilman Rutherford, if you can read if we have any requests for agenda address.
Yes, we have Joanne Green. What agenda address item are you addressing?
Um, I'm addressing the, um...
Millage. Okay, very good. You have the floor. The signups are before every meeting. So since the meeting begins at 6:00 PM, residents have an opportunity for the entire week. Well, and if you want to leave a note with Legislative Council Monique Sharp here, we may be able to figure out a way to ensure that you're on public comment if it's a public comment, um, because this would be your first time. Ms. Green, you have the floor.
Okay. Um, my first thing is that I noticed, it's interesting that we had this presentation tonight. And this, uh, a lot of people have already voted on mail-in voting. So if this was supposed to explain, which is very complicated, uh, what this means, uh, we, we're kind of late to the game. Uh, the other thing is, is that I understand that Attorney Chubb wrote this. I'm not ignorant. Some people disagree. But reading this proposal, the average person cannot even understand what it is. It should be written so citizens know what they're voting for. Number, and the other thing, if minus says value on my house was $30,000, not happening. Okay? Our houses went up. Our values went up. Our property taxes went up. You had more money. Spend it wisely. We are all having money troubles. We have an excess in our budget. No, we don't need more money. We're all tightening our belts and you do it too. And I have a few things at public comment that I'm going to mention that might help do that. So please, take a look at this. We can barely afford gas in our car. We don't need higher taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Bill Maxi, what's the agenda address that you're addressing?
Mr. Maxi, yes, it's you for agenda address. Which item on the agenda would you like to speak to? You have the floor.
Thank you again, uh, Mr. President. I'm looking at, the paper here says, purchasing ordinance to clarify certain definition and procedures. Does that mean that you are knowledgeable of EOE, BBD, or CCO? I didn't see anything to follow this that would, uh, sort of tell me whether the council knew what definitions are you speaking of? And without those definitions in mind, those are the three that I come up with. EOE, uh, employment opportunity, base, city business, and contract compliance officer. So I'm just curious to know what definitions are you familiar with? And what, what are you talking about in general?
Thank you, Mr. Maxi. Dr. Deidra Waterman, what agenda items are you... Alrighty then.
Good evening. So I did want to talk about number one, the special presentation, which, uh, isn't labeled as a tax increase, but that's what it is, if you've heard some other people. Ballot initiatives by, uh, by the way they're written by the State Election Commission are very complicated. So when you get into the booth and try to decipher them, if you don't know what's going on, sometimes it can be very confusing. But as I brought up at another meeting, uh, a tax increase, it, that's what it is. And all the terminology, thank you for the explanation, Deputy Mayor. But, uh, people don't know what Headley Amendment rollbacks and inflation ratios and all these kinds of things are, but it is a tax increase. And at this point in time, people just feel, as some people have expressed, that it's not necessary to have a tax increase. I left this council, this administration with a $21 million surplus. That's enough for you to work with. Okay? You also were left with 38, 37.8 million dollars of ARP money, which is yet to be spent. In fact, you put $10 million in the budget to cover, cover the structural deficit. I hope you don't spend that because it really should be restored to ARP to benefit the citizens and the residents like it was intended to do. So I hope you'll be careful of that. But a tax increase, as I said, if it's a duck, walks like a duck, quacks like a duck, it's a duck. So it's a tax increase. And so just so people won't be confused on Proposition 2, that's what that is. It's really not needed. There's already three council people who've said, don't associate their names with supporting this. You know, they've already said this. So if they don't support it, then evidently, why should we? The other thing on the agenda is the one dealing with the zoning map amendment. That's number 14. I want to bring to your attention again, the people who came last week to talk about, uh, the one that's being proposed for you to facilitate that loophole uh, that was put in the amendment, uh, for the, uh, medical marijuana. To, they don't want medical marijuana facilities in their neighborhoods, particularly this one would be close to a childcare facility. So please observe.
That does conclude your time.
Wills of people.
Any additional requests?
No, sir.
That concludes, uh, agenda address. We are now at, uh, the ordinance. Uh, Clerk Doyle, could you restate again the, uh, title of the ordinance that we're considering as amended, um, in the agenda?
Thank you, Mr. President. An ordinance to amend the city of Pontiac's purchasing ordinance to clarify certain definitions and procedures and to permit the city's purchasing agent to make non-major expenditures up to $5,000 without engaging in the practice of competitive bidding.
Thank you. We turn now to the administration for them to introduce the proposal and their rationale.
Thank you, President McGinnis. I'd like to welcome Alicia Marn, our purchasing manager, to the podium to, uh, walk through her recommendations for changes to city ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor, um, Council. Um, I did make a presentation two weeks ago regarding the threshold. Um, in light of that, um, recommendation, um, one important factor we needed to consider was inflation. Um, we do know that prices are increasing everywhere. The cost of goods and services are increasing. Um, there's been increases, um, inflicted in the consumer, um, price index as well, which is, um, maintained by the U.S. Bureau of Labor and Statistics, which is one of the indices that we use to gauge price increases. And so, um, after having a thorough review, again, of transactions, um, that were being processed, um, we thought that the appropriate threshold would be the 5,000. Um, this is going to be the first reading. Do I have any questions from...
You can continue to proceed. Well, and then we can dive into questions. Thank you.
Okay. So, um, in addition to the, um, initial 65% um, of what I presented two weeks ago, there's another 9% that's below the 5,000 mark. So that'll bring us to 74% of transactions below, um, 5,000. That's consuming a lot of time for processing and creating bottlenecks, um, in our procure-to-pay system.
So in your assessment, by making this ordinance change, it would allow Pontiac City Government to be more cost-effective and more efficient?
Yes. And there are additional policies and procedures, um, that we will be implementing um, and that we are considering that will be rolled out to make sure we have proper internal controls in place.
You're continuing to review additional, um, protocol improvements?
Correct.
Thank you. Other discussion on this first reading. So as with ordinance, uh, changes, it requires two readings. Uh, following this first reading, the clerk and his team will, uh, post a synopsis of the ordinance changes in a publication of circulation and to adhere to those requirements. And, uh, there are another opportunity for the public next week as well. It isn't required that it must be just in two readings. If there needs to be further deliberation, it can continue in future weeks. Uh, Deputy Mayor Stevens and then Councilwoman James.
So, um, purchasing, um, manager Martin talked about what essentially is item number two on the agenda. Um, but we combined items number two and three. And just to bring your attention to the other changes that our brain brought forth for, and the reason why this is, even though she talked about this before, the reason why this is a first reading again is because we are combining those two items. And if you look at pages, uh, three and four essentially of the ordinance, what we are also doing is clarifying some ambiguous language in the ordinance about what is a major contract and what is the threshold for items that have to come before city council. And so those are the definition, um, clarifications that are being made.
Councilwoman James, then Councilman Nicholson. You have the floor, Councilman.
Yeah, uh, Deputy Mayor just clarified, uh, part of it because, uh, I know we talked about this last week and I thought we were voting on it. And it was confusing what happened tonight that we now have two new issues.
Well, did you want me to respond or you want me to wait?
I, I, he clarified it.
Oh, okay.
So are we, we still can ask questions about this?
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah. Uh, my concern is, uh, you know, in terms of the, the first part of it to, um, eliminate the competitive bidding process, uh, for purchases under $5,000. And I understand the rationale that you gave, uh, last week. And that is consistent with, you know, how municipalities are, are handling it. The, the concern I have though is if you could walk me through, what are the checks and balances currently in place to ensure that if we approve this, that we would, you know, that there are adequate checks and balances to prevent any kind of fraud from taking place?
So there are a number of things that we're doing. Um, all vendors wanting to do business with the city of Pontiac, um, must first complete a W-9 form, which they have to submit to accounting. Um, we verify that information, excuse me, making sure it's accurate before we enter them into our pay system. Um, they have an opportunity to then participate in any competitive opportunities or request for quotes, um, that the city may have at that time. Um, when I refer to competitive bidding, I'm really referring to the formal process. So that involves us having to meet internally with stakeholders, develop a scope of service, create a solicitation document, post that documentation to the city's website, post that documentation to BidNet. Um, and within that process, there's milestones, um, that we have to meet. Um, and then ultimately, there's a deadline for companies to submit a sale bid. Um, those bids are opened by the city clerk's office. Um, I'm present there as well. And the public is open to be there as well. Um, we do a reading of what those bids are in terms of cost. Um, we do a bid tabulation, which is then posted to BidNet and also the city of Pontiac's website. So it's a very thorough process and it requires a lot of resources. So we didn't want to expend those amount of resources for something that's $2,000. Because the, by the time we finished the process, we would have exceeded the cost of whatever that good or service is.
Uh, but do, now that if we, if we go to the, anything under a $5,000 that, you know, you would be able to go ahead and process it, are we still requiring though, uh, receipts, you know?
Yes.
And, and, and invoices and those kinds of, do we still require...
They're still required to get a quote, um, if they're creating a requisition. Because what a requisition does is it gets permission to make a purchase, right, ideally? Um, so they should have a quote or a contract or some document identifying what it is that we're going to be procuring or buying. And then that goes to the department head for approval because they're the keepers of the budgets for their departments. And then once the department head approves it, it goes to finance for review to make sure that it's coded appropriately, it's being expensed to the correct line item in the budget. And then once that happens, it comes to purchasing. So I'm checking to make sure there's contracts in place, that we've dotted all our i's, crossed all our t's. There was quotes attached. If that information is, is missing, then I go back to that request. I can reject that requisition. It'll go back to the requester. And they have to attach the missing information before we can proceed. That's how the, the process should work.
Councilman Nicholson, Councilman Parker.
Oh, oh, you'll tell.
Councilman Parker.
I just want to know, cause, um, does the one that we got this copy that was separate from this packet, is this the change or is...
So the first paragraph should not be 2,500. It should be 5,000. That's the correct copy that council should have. Um, both ordinances were combined into one.
So this is a one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Councilman Nicholson.
Um, two questions. Um, I asked the last reading about the ability in the system to be able to pull out these sorts of resources. We could look at the data, especially in finance committee, see if we have some trends, uh, common vendors, common users, that sort of thing.
So the one report that I did find would identify requisitions without attachments. Um, that's the only report that I could find that would, you know, give us some kind of data. And then that'll tell me, okay, well, why don't these requisitions have attachments and it's like flagged? And then I can go back and look at those specific requisitions and follow back up. Um, either rejecting a requisition or if it's time is of the essence, just making sure we get the appropriate documentation so that I can approve it.
Okay, yeah, that's acceptable. The, um, the last question that I had was about, um, are there, what are the, 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 the controls in order, 5,000, right? So we could have somebody who uses the same vendor, but they use them 35 times that year and they make sure, we've seen this. We saw this in our forensic audit, uh, where somebody used vendors, but they were very careful to keep it under the amount that had to come before council. So is there a fail-safe where we're looking at vendors, the frequent use of those vendors to see whether or not we need to...
Yes. Um, so because that purchasing position was vacant, you didn't have someone to kind of take a look at those kind of purchases. Um, I definitely have started to look at those, looking at patterns. You know, if you did a $2,500 purchase today or the same $2,500 purchase two days later, another $2,500 for the same thing, um, that's an indication that you're trying to break up the, the cost so you don't have to meet certain requirements.
Great. Thank you.
And then another thing we're doing is trying to establish a list of preferred vendors. So these vendors would come from, um, cooperative contracts... So, these vendors would come from cooperative contracts that we've established, like for maintenance, repair work, for automotive, work for things of that nature. We're using MyDeal. We're also using Oakland County. And then, there's another cooperative that we've been a member of that I was just made aware of as well. Yes, I'm sorry.
That's really great to hear. So, my question is, what about minority companies who have never been in the bidding process for the City of Pontiac? And history has not been allowed to bid. How are we making it more engaging for those companies that are not quite as big as the other vendors we use? But we want to make sure that we're giving minorities, whether from Hispanic, any community, the opportunity to bid on our bid. How are we doing that? What is the legwork we're doing?
So, we've been having conversations about how to capture that data. And one of the recommendations that I have is to create a substitute W-9 form, which will allow companies to then identify if they're a minority-owned business, a woman-owned business, et cetera. And not just say that they are, but they have to give us evidence that they are because there are certifications, you know, that you can get to verify that. But I think with that data, we'll be able to say, okay, we're, you know, having 10% of, you know, women-owned businesses that we're, you know, awarding contracts to. But that's going to take time to build.
Okay, thank you so much.
Any further discussion? Councilman James.
Yeah, I would still, like, you mentioned that you were still going to be working on developing additional process controls for this particular ordinance. And I really would like to see what those controls would be. You know, do you have any idea when you think you would have those completed?
So, it's the purchasing policy that I referred to when I did the other presentation. That'll have a lot of policy and procedure. That'll make things a little clearer for our personnel in terms of how to do business, how to buy, you know, on behalf of the City of Pontiac. You know, what's allowed, what's not allowed. So, that's supposed to be completed by the end of this year and I am working on it now.
Hearing no further discussion, the first reading of this ordinance amendment concludes. It will be back before us next week. We are now at the resolution honoring the life of Matthew Barrens. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. This motion is now before us. We are very saddened to report that an employee of the City of Pontiac, who specifically was working in code enforcement, succumbed to illness and passed away in recent weeks. And so, as we have set the practice, we honor and venerate those who have given their careers to the citizens and city of Pontiac for our retirees. And then, this is the first instance, to my recollection, of somebody who was a current employee who lost their life. So, I want to, Clerk Doyle, if you're in a position, if you'd like to read the resolution. And I want to thank Legislative Council Sharp for her work in preparing the resolution. And then, I want to give the floor to the mayor and members of staff who have any reflections on Mr. Barrens.
Pontiac City Council Resolution Honoring Departed City Employee Matthew Barrens. Whereas the Pontiac City Council would like to pay proper tribute to Matthew Barrens, an individual of great character, a kind-hearted, sincere and passionate man and a devoted City of Pontiac employee. And whereas it is feeling of the deepest regret that the Pontiac City Council mourns the passing of Matthew Barrens. And whereas Matthew Barrens married wife Christine and it was this union that allowed Matthew to uncover the key to joy and happiness, discover the true meaning of love and acquire a soulmate for over 35 years. Whereas Matthew Barrens proudly served his country in the U.S. Coast Guard, performing the duties of radio communications and audiovisual for over seven years. And whereas Matthew Barrens started working for the City of Pontiac on September 14, 2020, as a code inspector. And whereas Matthew Barrens was truly a free spirit and had many talents, he also worked for Nationwide Video for over 20 years, traveled the U.S. extensively on his motorcycle, enjoyed fixing bicycles for others, sailing and listening to music. And whereas Matthew Barrens was an endearing and honest man who always maintained a positive outlook on life, was a great listener, made friends everywhere he went and was willing to go beyond, sorry, go above and beyond to help others and serve as a positive role model to not only his coworkers, but to all. Now, therefore, be resolved that the members of the Pontiac City Council, the members of this great community, will greatly miss Matthew Barrens as his life was a portrait of service, a legacy that will long endure the passage of time and will remain as a comforting memory to all those whose lives he touched. We give our sincere condolences to the family, friends and colleagues of Matthew Barrens.
Thank you, sir. Mayor and members of staff that may wish to speak to the tragic loss of Mr. Barrens.
Well, it is tragic. It's certainly the first time in recent years that I'm aware of where we've lost an active city employee. And Matt was very dedicated to his job and did really great work in the area of code enforcement. I am very grateful for his service and I know that our residents are very grateful for his service in trying to clean up the blight in our community. I also want to acknowledge that some of his coworkers, some of his coworkers who work most closely with him are here and it's very kind of Jermaine Maxmain Branner to be here and Jack McIntyre to be here. And it certainly speaks to the relationships that he had here at City Hall that some of his closest coworkers came tonight, not because they were here for other agenda items, but specifically because they wanted to remember Matt as City Council Honor Sam. And I just want to convey to Matt's family that we're grateful that you shared Matt with us here in the community, that you were so generous with allowing him to spend so much time serving the residents of our city. We appreciate him. We remember him. We'll always remember him fondly and we keep you, his family, in our hearts and in our prayers.
Well said. Mr. Branner, is there anything you'd like to share to put you on the spot? Any reflections?
Well, I'm just here to show my respect. I will say that, you know, Matt was the type of guy.
We'll need you to use the microphone. I'm sorry, just so that way those at home can hear your reflections of him. And we're calling on you next, Mr. McIntyre, so.
Put me on the spot. So, I will say that, you know, Matt was the type of guy that you can call him and you can be mad at the world, but Matt will talk to you for three hours if he had to until you was calm, relaxed, and you had a quite understanding of how the city operate. I can remember him talking to three people for eight hours. And he would talk to them again until they was calm, until they understood, until they was able to move on in peace about their property or any type of ticket or issue that they had with the city. So, Matt was a very patient guy. He loved Pontiac and he came to work. He was one of the first people, you know, he came to work 20 minutes early just to make sure that he was organized and ready to speak to the citizens of Pontiac until they was, you know, calm and ready to proceed with their day. So, he was a great guy.
Thank you.
So, it's, you know, I'm new to the position as manager of code enforcement, but I'm not new to knowing Matt. When you leave tonight and you, right across from the Building Department, we used to joke and call it Matt's love seat. So, the inspectors in the Building Department. One thing that I have to say that always stuck out with me regarding Matt was that he would take the time when residents would come in and he would explain things very thoroughly. They left with all the answers they needed among, and including many resources that they were going to need. Even if we specifically couldn't be the assistance that they needed, he made sure to provide that. If you go and look at his desk right now, the whole wall is plastered with resources that he liked to share as much information as he could with folks that were needing assistance. That was his goal. That was the way he operated. But we kind of joked, some of the inspectors and I, when I was working in the Building Department directly, we would always see Matt sitting there. So, residents would come in and typically, there's a barrier. There's that glass wall in the Building Department. And Matt would come around and he'd walk them outside that hallway area there and he'd sit with them. And sometimes, he'd sit there for a long period of time until he was sure that they had the information they needed. So, that's rare, you know. So, we all have a lot to learn still from him. Even in his absence, we make reference to him regularly. We honor him as much as we can regularly. And even though I not only knew him for a brief period of time, I felt like I knew him very well. And so, he'll definitely be missed. I think we have a lot to learn from the way he conducted himself and hopefully, moving forward, we do things always in Matt's honor, so.
Thank you. Members of council that wish to speak. Councilwoman Rutherford?
I want to say to the family again, we feel the loss of this gentleman. But not only that, when I first got into council and I had no idea what code enforcement did and I had no idea what the DPW did and I was sitting down there and I was frustrated because I just wanted to get something done. It was about a batch of houses, the first batch of houses we voted on. So, I seen Mr. Matt and he talked me through what code enforcement was, what they do, how they do the bidding, how things are done. But he never shooed me away when I had, even if I felt like it was a silly question, he would answer that question. And that speaks a lot about his character. But not only that, he was kind in a world where everybody ain't always kind. He is respectful in a world where everybody ain't always respectful. He showed grace when so many of us sometimes are graceless. And I will remember that he was graceful, he was respectful, he was kind and he said what he meant and he meant what he said and he did it with indecency and in order. And I will always remember him for that. So, to his coworkers, to the mayor, to everybody, let's take all those aspects that he had and let's embody them in our character and in the way we do things. And that's all I have to say.
Councilman Nicholson?
The first time I met Matt, he came into my restaurant looking for a gift card for someone's birthday. And the story he told me was that in the past, he had just started working somewhere. In the first week he worked there, it was his birthday and no one knew. And he remembered how bad that felt and odd that that felt, that he kind of ate lunch on his own on his birthday. And he said, he, since then, vowed that he would never, he would make sure that everybody's birthday was special. And he went around to the department. He collected money and he asked that person where they wanted to go. And I was flattered to hear that they wanted to come eat with us. And then, on that gift card, that person brought him back. So, you know, it was, the value was, you know, was seen both ways, I know, by everyone. And he had a huge heart. The resources, that's not lost on me either. He reached out to me many times to ask about, ask for resources, ask for help, ask for advocacy, if there was something that he felt I could be helpful with. So, I really cherished his work and he will be greatly missed.
Councilman James?
Yeah, much like Councilwoman Rutherford, Matt was my first introduction to code enforcement and to city employees. And he was just a wonderful man, one of the most responsive of any city employee that I've had the opportunity to work with. It's just, you know, I'm just heartbroken that this has happened. He worked right up until almost the end, which I think is indicative of the kind of commitment that he had, how he felt about his coworkers and just the people of Pontiac. He attempted to serve until he absolutely could not serve any longer. So, we definitely are not going to miss him. We started missing him day one. And so, I want to commend his coworkers. Appreciate you being here. And I want to say to his family that we miss him so much and we are so thankful that you shared him with us and we want to give you our deepest sympathy and condolences in his loss. Thank you.
Amen. Any final discussion? With that, roll call on adoption of the resolution. Clerk Doyle.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Six shays, no names.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution honoring the life of Charles Hayward, a Pontiac Fire Department retiree?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Goodman. That motion is now before us. Mr. Hayward served for 25 years, serving the citizens of Pontiac with the Pontiac Fire Department. And prior to that, he also served our country in the United States military. He had a long, full and life full of love. And in recent weeks, he passed away. And I'm so grateful that his obituary referenced his time with the Pontiac Fire Department. So, that way, it prompted us to be able to know about his tenure since it was many decades ago. But literally, lives, property, people's health and well-being were positively impacted because of his 25 years of choosing that career path. And we salute him and his life. Thank you Legislative Council Sharp for the research you did and the work to help craft this resolution. Is there any discussion on the motion before us? Hearing no further discussion, roll call on the adoption of the resolution honoring the life of Charles Hayward and saluting his service to the people of Pontiac through the Pontiac Fire Department. Clerk Doyle, roll call. Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Six shays, no names.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the proposed budget amendment?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Goodman. Two weeks ago, we had the resolution authorizing the clerk to post the notice. So, this is the follow-up since that notice was given. This budget amendment would transfer out of the Capital Improvement Fund, GL Account 445000288.000, unearned revenue, and transfer into the Capital Improvement Fund, GL Account 445000674.101, skate park contribution from $101,55,000, transfer into the Capital Improvement, GL Account 445000675.00, skate park contribution from private source, transfer into the Capital Improvement Fund, GL Account 44500528.000, skate park federal grant other, $125,000, and increase the budget appropriation in Capital Improvement Fund, GL Account 445699976.001, skate park building addition and improvement, As was shared two weeks ago, it's essentially an accounting best practice that we specify the grant funding that we receive, that we put it in specific GL accounts in the budget. And so, this is following through on that and it was discussed two weeks ago when we did the initial posting. But I want to give the floor to the mayor administration for further information you'd like the council and community to know.
Thank you, Mr. President. You said it well. This is designed to bring our budget in line with accounting best practices when it comes to accounting for grants, to have a separate line item in the budget for each of those grant-funded items. It also, in some instances, is a requirement of receiving those grants, that we account for them individually and separately. That's true of not just the current agenda item, number six, but also of the following agenda items, seven, eight and nine. The current agenda item relates to the skate park project up in Oakland Park. The following agenda items relate to the Next 50 Grant for the renovation of the senior centers, the Kaboom Grant for the enhancements to Hidden River Plaza downtown and for grants in general from Oakland County, respectively. To the extent that city council members have any specific questions, Alex Born-Gesser, our grants director, is here. our grants director, is here and is available to answer any specific questions folks may have.
Thank you. Any discussion on the budget amendment before us? And Director Born-Gesser, feel free if there's anything further you'd like to elaborate on. Any further discussion? And again, we dived into this two weeks ago as well. Hearing no discussion, roll call on adoption of the resolution to approve this proposed budget amendment for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Six J's, no names.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish the proposed budget amendment to increase the budget appropriation specific for the next 50 grant?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. The mayor gave us a preview. And again, this is just authorizing us to publish it. The clerks will publish it, and in two weeks, it'll come before city council. So it gives the community and council an opportunity to deliberate further. But this is for the next 50 initiative grant, allowing for private source resources, funding to enhance our senior centers in our city. Any discussion on the resolution to authorize the clerk to publish this proposed amendment? Hearing no discussion, roll call on adoption of the resolution. Clerk Doyle.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Six J's, no names.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish the proposed budget amendment specifically for the Kaboom grant expenditure?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Councilwoman Rutherford. That motion is now before us. As the mayor shared, this is continuing with that same path, and this allows the clerk to publish the notice. And in two weeks, the actual budget amendment itself will be before us. And it's worth noting that all of these items came before city council and the community earlier this year, when we initially accepted the funds and were awarded the funds as well. And we've gotten a few status updates along the way. Hearing no further discussion, roll call on adoption of the resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish this proposed budget amendment. Clerk Doyle.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Six J's, no names.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish the proposed budget amendment for this fiscal year, specifically for parks and neighborhoods, project grants from Oakland County?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. This motion is now before us. Any further discussion? We've spoken to it broadly, and again, this has come before us when we were awarded the grants, funding from Oakland County. Hearing no further discussion, roll call on adoption of the resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish this proposed budget amendment. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Six J's, no names.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the City of Pontiac Limited English Proficiency Plan for Title 11?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. Should it be Roman numeral six, or is it Roman numeral 11? Six. Let the record reflect, it's a V, not an X. Esque Roman numerals. All right. So the resolution to approve the City of Pontiac Limited English Proficiency Plan for Title 6. Mayor Grimaldi, you have the floor with administration here to give a deeper dive.
Well, thank you. I want to turn the podium over to our Human Resources Director for greater information and detail. But in a nutshell, this is about bringing our Title 11, excuse me, plan for equity and inclusion under federal civil rights law, up to snuff and make sure that we're in full compliance with it by providing provisions relating to limited English proficiency speakers. And without further ado, I would like to invite Human Resources Director Angela Benitez to the podium.
Good evening, council, mayor, deputy mayor, and the residents of Pontiac. So what you have before you is the resolution to adopt the Limited English Proficiency Plan. And so this comes out of Executive Order 13166. And Executive Order 13166, Improving Access to Services for Persons with Limited English Proficiency, was signed on August 11, 2000, and requires municipalities, companies that receive federal funding, to examine the services they provide, identify any need for services to those with limited English proficiency, and develop and implement a system to provide those services so LEP persons can have meaningful access to them. So that's what you see before you. This is not a, it's not a new plan. It's an updated one. The last one that we found was pretty dated. It was back to 2014. And so we do need to have that updated, and we should be reviewing that every year.
Thank you. Any discussion? Again, this is prompted by Title 6 of nondiscrimination laws and the Civil Rights Act of 1964 specifically. Does this have any implications for those seeking job opportunities with the City of Pontiac, since you're the Human Resources Director? Anything where it comes into play for you?
It does. And so it relates to anyone who is seeking services, and employment would be included under this LEP plan as well, that we would provide those with forms and documents in languages that they are able to understand.
So again, this is updating an existing policy, last reviewed and changed in 2014. Thank you for staff administration for bringing it for consideration. Deputy Mayor Stevens?
Director Benitez, can you just talk about how this is a first step and what happens after the LEP plan?
Yeah. So this is just a first step in us being able to complete the actual Title 6 nondiscrimination plan. So a large part of that plan is the LEP plan. So once we get this taken care of, and we, and this, we get your blessing on this, then this will go into the Title 6 plan, and then we'll come before you again and ask for you to approve the actual Title 6 plan, which again, is not a new plan, but it does need to be updated and reviewed every year. So the implications of not having a Title 6 plan is that you're supposed to have a plan if you're receiving federal funds. And if they find out that you don't have a plan, they can stop you from receiving those funds via grants. And so that's why it's so important for us to do this.
Councilman Nicholson, followed by Councilman James?
Director, are the, is sign language and Braille covered in our disability policy separate? Some, I know it's interchangeable, can be language or disability is?
Yeah. So we, our disability plan and our, our Diversity Equity and Inclusion Plan, we do talk a lot about that in our New Heart Orientation for Persons Who Have Disabilities. So we are looking at making sure that if a person, you know, is wheelchair-bound or they're blind, as a matter of fact, we do have had an individual who volunteered at the polls, and we assured her that, yes, we have something for you to do, and we were able to assist her with that. So those are things that we are, we are looking at. We have now, we have a Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee that looks at all of those things now.
So that covers us on, from an employment perspective, but what about persons or citizens served? Do we, can we incorporate American Sign Language into the language plan?
We do. And so how we determine who is considered like limited English proficient is that they look at statistics of how many persons who do not speak, say, English as well, or less than very well, and then that's what they determine it on. But I get what you're saying, is that if we could incorporate that, I don't think there'll be any problem adding more than what the government requires, as long as we have the basic plan.
Okay. Yeah, maybe the requirements are different from municipalities. I work for Medicaid provider, and it is a requirement in LEP for us.
This is, this requirement here is under DOT, and that's because of our, the transportation system and the highways. So they have a plan for each and every department. You can probably think of like energy and, so this is for, this plan is specifically for Department of Transportation.
Thank you.
Councilwoman James, followed by Mayor Grimaldi.
Okay. This is specifically for the Department of Transportation, you just said?
Transportation, yes.
Okay. So this is not for just a general operation, operating procedure for City Hall?
No, it is not. So we, because we do receive federal funds for our highways and transportation, we have to have this plan. So this plan is specifically related to Department of Transportation.
How does that relate to the city, though? I mean, is there a specific department at the city that we're talking about, like DPW? Or it's related to DPW?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor Grimaldi's next on the speakers list, followed by Deputy Mayor Stevens.
Director Benitez, to clarify the councilwoman's question, this plan is being put in place to satisfy requirements specific to Department of Transportation, but this plan will govern the actions of the City of Pontiac in general.
Exactly. In general? Yes, in general. Yeah. The plan is, which is what I'll present next week, is very thorough in that persons, whether they are using transportation or not, because you're receiving funding, that you should still have this in place.
I'm just trying to clarify, for the sake of my residence, I have a number of people who are Hispanic and of different ethnicities. So if they were to come to the City of Pontiac, they would, you would be able to give them forms for various things in their own language?
That's what-
That's available today?
That's what the plan says. It specifically says in the plan, whether they're getting those services or not, that you should still provide, provide those. And that will, that language will be in that plan.
Okay.
Mayor Grimaldi, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. So we do, to answer your question a little more directly, Councilwoman James, we do have a number of Spanish speakers who work here at City Hall, and that's helpful, of course, in terms of managing verbal conversations from Spanish-speaking residents whose first language is not English, or who may struggle with the English language. But we are in the process of implementing a full translation of our forms and our website and other things to the Spanish language. We are not quite there yet, so I want to be very transparent about that. We, we think that the best and most effective way to do that is to contract for professional English-to-Spanish translation services. And we've had conversations with Central Multicultural La Familia about contracting with them for that purpose. It's important that this be done right and properly. You know, someone might be quite good at conversational and spoken Spanish, but may not be adequately proficient to fully and accurately translate documents in a way that's grammatically correct. And so that's one aspect of it. The other aspect of it is, it's very important that the Spanish translation be as universal as possible in light of the fact that there are many different dialects of Spanish. You know, many people in American schools learn Castilian Spanish from Spain, but most of the Spanish speakers here in Pontiac are of Mexican or Puerto Rican ancestry, and increasingly of Central American ancestry. And so we want to make sure that, especially when it comes to terms of art, or slang, or idioms, that the Spanish translation utilized by the city is most universal and best understood by the majority of Spanish speakers who live here in the City of Pontiac. So we are working very closely with Central Multicultural La Familia to facilitate comprehensive translations of documents, both paper documents and virtual or electronic documents here at City Hall, in a way that will be most universally understood by Spanish speakers here in Pontiac. I also appreciate Councilman Nicholson bringing up the deaf population or those who are hard of hearing. We do have at least one employee here, our community relations specialist, who is fluent in American Sign Language, and certainly she is happy to facilitate translations as needed with the deaf or hard-of-hearing community.
So if I could just add, in the plan, it actually, we had to specify what we were going to do. So you don't have that before you right now, but like I said, I plan to present this next week, and it'll show, it lists the steps of what we're going to do. And actually, some of those steps are what the government says that we have to do, but that's all in the plan. So you don't have that in front of you right now, but it is in the plan.
Well, I do have the plan in front of me, and I've reviewed it. Is this the existing plan, or the one that's proposed for change? Deputy Mayor Stevens?
So I believe, Director Benitez, when you say the plan, there are actually two plans, right? So there's the Limited English Proficiency Plan, and then there is the full Title 6 Plan.
Yes.
And so when you say you don't have the plan in front of you, you don't have the full Title 6 Plan in front of you.
Yes.
You only have the Limited English Proficiency Plan in front of you.
Exactly. That's what I mean.
Thank you for that clarification. Councilman Goodman?
So just one brief question, and it's on me to kind of have forgotten this between the budget season and now. When we were doing the, during the budget, we had, if I remember correctly, a discussion about making sure that we use some of that budgeted money for translations. So I mean, I'm glad, very glad to hear that you're-
There was a mouth.
So I'm very happy to hear that we're doing that work, because it's extremely important that we do that translation work, especially in Pontiac. And then also, to just a small point, most places don't teach Castilian Spanish, at least not in this area. It actually usually works out to be Mexican dialect Spanish. But just making sure, digressing from that point, that we make sure that we use the money that was budgeted for that translation, because if we can do it correctly, we might as well just go full speed ahead, especially in trying to make sure that the city is accessible as possible. Because while we're working through this plan, which is a great thing, the city that we have the Limited English Proficiency, as well as, again, the full Title 6 Plan that will be coming, that we are doing this, because in so many communities in southeast Michigan that have huge sections of the population who are simply not being reached out to, like the most clear example I can think of while we're having this discussion is like Dearborn. For a while, Dearborn did not print things in Arabic, surprisingly, despite half of their city population speaking and understanding fluent Arabic. So just making sure that we're doing this for our city residents is extremely important with the number of Spanish speakers that we have here. So I just want to like just hammer home the importance of, you know, why this is a good thing, that we should be doing, and that the city does its best to facilitate that. So that's all.
Any further discussion? The motion before us is adoption of the resolution to approve the City of Pontiac Limited English Proficiency Plan. Roll call and adoption. Clerk Doyle.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Six J's, no names.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. We now have our second reading. It's of a zoning map amendment approval. That resolution was moved and seconded last week. Because it's a rezoning proposal, it has two readings at least, and this is that second reading. The staff administration has provided supplemental materials per the request of city council. And with that, we give the floor to Mr. Smith to provide us any further information before we continue deliberations.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. As you mentioned, we did provide the additional documents, the site plan review and site plans that was presented to the Planning Commission for both items today. I did not present another presentation, but I do have, just to recap some of the items from last week, ZMA 2208 is a rezoning from an R1-1 family dwelling district parcel to a P1 parcel to support off-street parking. The applicant requests rezoning from R1 to P1. The master plan identifies the site as traditional neighborhood residential. The proposed zoning designation complements the future land use and designation in this area. The subject property is compatible with the specific requirements related to the P1 parking district. The Planning Commission did vote to recommend to city council for approval of ZMA 22-02. The zoning board of appeals did vote on October 17th to permit the setback on the adjacent primary parcel. The parcel they are requesting to rezone to P1 is strictly for parking, so there would be no medical marijuana use- there would be no medical marijuana uses operating on that specific parcel. It would be permitted to operate on those parcels adjacent to Orchard Lake, which is what the Planning Commission did approve. And then addition, in compliance with the city of Pontiac, Medical Marijuana Overlay District, there were five provisioning centers presented, permitted in each overlay district, Cedar Chavez Downtown and Walton Boulevard. The property associated with the proposed P-1 designation, that medical marijuana provisioning center is one of those permitted outside the overlay district. So this rezoning does support a use that is permitted within the scope of our current Medical Marijuana Overlay District. And then approaching these last few items, the rezoning does meet all the special or the criteria for zoning map amendments identified in section 6.804 of the zoning ordinance. And then finally, on September 7th is the, the date the preliminary site plan was approved with the following conditions, that they relocate the transformer from the parking parcel to the primary parcel. All proposed signs, ground-mounted, and building must comply with the clear vision requirements of the zoning ordinance. The P-1 parking district will be required, which is what we're reviewing today. They must provide right-of-way buffering and landscaping requirements per the zoning ordinance, and the plan must be approved by DPW and Engineering in right-of-way. Then if you have any questions, I can answer those.
Discussion from council. Again, this is our second round of deliberations. Councilman Nicholson, you have the floor?
I, I need some, to jog my memory. So there is an alleyway. Are they planning to vacate the alleyway, or?
They are not. The alley would remain public.
And the alley would remain in the city's-
Correct.
-of the city's responsibility?
Yes. The applicant is not requesting ownership of the alley.
The house that face, that faces that is, would be part of, for demolition?
Are you referring to the house on Dover or Berwick?
Yeah, one, yeah, on Dover.
Yep. The, that house would be demolished, yes. And it's, I believe it's a garage.
It's garage?
Yes. The garage would be demolished.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Councilwoman James?
Yeah, I, I guess I thought we had two proposals, one for the provisioning center that was rejected, and, and this one. So now, now why are we looking at this one separately?
We have, I can answer that. There are, there were three last week, so we had first readings of three zoning map amendments. One of them, we voted to deny, and that was the South Old Telegraph and Golf Drive, Get Your Greens, Growing Processing. So that has been denied, and there's no need for a second reading because it's been denied. So we now have two tonight. The second reading for this one parcel, which is a parking lot, you know, going to P-1 parking. Their, this main facility is at 939 Orchard Lake Road, and that received site plan approval from the Planning Commission. It did not need a rezoning, because it already had the appropriate rezoning for the primary portion. This is just like their additional parking on a parcel just south of their facility. And then up next is that second reading for the West Walton Boulevard zoning map amendment as well. So what was three last week is now down to two, because we denied one of the three last week.
Okay, but was that the same owner, the Walter Manju?
No.
That's not the same?
That was, that applicant's name was Vincent Cireo. It's very close in proximity, but different sites. Correct.
Very confused. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
I have one last question.
Councilman Nicholson.
I, I'm sorry. The, in the overall development of this, are they planning to maintain the green space in the right-of-way on Orchard Lake Road? All of the rest of the green space for parking and all of the other buildings has been turned into street-side parking. So would this take the place of street-side parking?
This, if I heard that question correct, are you referring to the right-of-way green space?
Correct.
And that would continue to be the responsibility of the city, yes.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. What's before us is the resolution to approve the zoning map amendment, ZMA 2208. The parcel number is 641431380021, rezoning from R-1 one-family dwelling district to P-1 parking, as requested by the petitioner, Walter Manju. Roll call on adoption. Clerk Doyle.
Parker?
No.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
No.
Four Y's, two N's.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve zoning map amendment? Oh, pardon me, there's already a motion before us. Again, this is our second reading, so it was moved and seconded last week. We're talking now about ZMA 22-09, 529 East Walton Boulevard. Those parcels are 641409377015 016 017, and then finally, 641409377028. This would be rezoning from R-1 one-family dwelling district to C-3 Corridor Commercial, as requested by the petitioner, Steve Robinson. This is our second reading. Mr. Smith, anything further you'd like to share?
Thank you, Council President. Again, I'll just reiterate some of those items presented in the last meeting. This rezoning, ZMA 22-09, on behalf of the applicant 1111 Provisioning Center, is requesting parcel-zoned R-1 one-family dwelling district be rezoned to C-3 Corridor Commercial. The proposed rezoning supports the Medical Marijuana Provisioning Center that is permitted in compliance with the Medical Marijuana Overlay Districts located at the intersection of East Walton and Jocelyn. The parcels that are currently zoned, R-1 one-family, are owned by the applicant. There are two existing homes that are proposed to be demolished, and the remaining land that would be converted to C-3 would be used for green space, parking, and retention areas. So the areas currently zoned, C-3, are where the facility will sit, and then these C-3 parcels would support that use. The master plan identifies the area as neighborhood commercial. The proposed zoning designation complements the future land use in this area, and further brings those parcels into compliance with the master plan. The subject parcel is compatible with the C-3 Corridor Commercial District standards, and any future developments must comply with the zoning ordinance related to city standards, codes, ordinances, and procedures for approval. Planning Commission did vote on October 5th and recommended to City Council approval of ZMA 22-09. Again, of the five provisioning centers permitted within the Walton Boulevard overlay, this is one of the five, and it is in compliance with the adopted Medical Marijuana Overlay District scheme. There are, there are several criteria identified in the zoning ordinance, section 6.804, for conditions or criteria to approve a zoning map amendment. This site does meet all of those criteria. And lastly, based on the preliminary site plan approval criteria provided by the Planning Commission on, Planning Commission on September 7th, the Planning Commission did conditionally approve that site plan, where the City Council would also have to approve the zoning map amendment, and then they must resubmit that site plan for final approval based on Water for Fire Department's comments, the Planning Technical Review comments, and the Department of Public Works comments for final site plan approval. And that completes my summary.
Thank you. This is a second reading. It was before us before. Is there any further discussion? Councilman James?
Did you show the site, the picture of the site plan last week?
Yes.
Was that one of the pictures that you showed last week?
Yes, that might have been-
It's not in the-
That might have been the one with the landscaping and the retention areas.
Okay. Could you also send me a copy of the site plan, the preliminary one that was approved on September the 27th?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure it's the same one that you, that you showed.
Yes, that-
I don't know how to identify, but there is one, we do have, it's smaller, but we do have some visuals here in one of the sets. Subject is ZMA 22-09, dated October 3rd. So per our request, they provided what the Planning Commission had for their initial consideration.
And if I may add, they are waiting on this approval, so they have not resubmitted a revised or submitted plan. So the only plan that staff has been able to review is the, the one plan that was presented to City Council, I mean, to Planning Commission.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. The, it's the resolution, adoption of the resolution to approve the zoning map amendment for 529 East Walton Boulevard from R-1 one-family dwelling district to C-3 Corridor Commercial, as requested by the petitioner. I'll be voting in favor, because I think it's wise for us to take what are single-family residential zonings on Walton and Jocelyn, and bring them into more of a C-3 Corridor Commercial zoning, because they are commercial corridors. So that's my thought process. Hearing no further discussion. Roll call and adoption of the resolution to approve the zoning map amendment, ZMA 22-09. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Six Y's, no N's.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. We have an item before us. It was previously moved and seconded, but we postponed it previously. It's a resolution approving memorandum of understanding between the city and school district for after-school youth recreation activities in Pontiac's elementary schools. Mayor and administration, where do we stand?
Well, thank you, President McGinnis. This has been a long time coming, in more ways than one. I, I think it's fair to say that collaboration between the city and the school district has been a long time coming, and this is an exciting opportunity to actually see that collaboration come to fruition, and I'm really excited about that. The details around this memorandum of understanding, around this contract, have also been a long time coming, because we had originally put it on the agenda two or three weeks back, and it's been postponed a couple of times, as the city and the school district and their attorneys ironed out some of the specific provisions of it. Not a whole lot has changed substantively here. The basics of it are as they were, which is that the city will be providing recreational and enrichment programming at the location of Pontiac School District Elementary Schools. But there have been some modifications or additions. One of those is that we have now specified that basketball teams will be limited in size to no more than 20 players per team. The school district had requested that language. The school, the, the city, rather, will be providing and facilitating dance classes for Project Excel students at those schools where Project Excel is offered. We also wanted to clarify that the city's obligation to reimburse the school district for any costs incurred by the school district would apply only insofar as those costs were related to this agreement, and were over and above costs that the school district would otherwise have incurred, so that we're just paying for any additional new costs relating to this arrangement. We also went back and forth a little bit around indemnification language. Cities and municipalities are not, we've been told by the city's attorney, allowed to indemnify other entities. The school district really wanted that language, and so the place where we ultimately landed is by adding the language to the extent permitted by law, each party will indemnify the other, meaning that if one party is sued as a result of the other party's actions, the party who's ultimately to blame would hold the innocent party, if you will, harmless. And by putting in that language to the extent permitted by law, if it's not permitted by law, which is our attorney's interpretation, Chris Trubilcock from Clark Hill, it is null and void. But the biggest item that delayed this was some of the, were some of the details around the background checks. Obviously, it's important that any staff that is working around children be subject to background checks, that we ensure the safety of our community's young people. All of us always agreed on that, and that language was always in the agreement in some form or fashion. But the school district felt very strongly that it, as the school district, had to itself perform background checks for any staff on school grounds, and that it therefore had to itself perform the background checks directly of the city's youth recreation and enrichment staff, coaches or referees who are on the premises. Our initial thought, and the way this was initially drafted, is that the city would conduct those background checks. But where we've landed now is that the school district will perform those background checks. The city will reimburse the school district for those background checks, which is, which makes sense. I mean, it's sort of ultimately the same cost. What we didn't want to have happen is that the school district perform those costs, performs those background checks, and we reimburse the school district for those costs. And then we also perform those background checks, because we put all of our employees through background checks as well. So the way we've drafted this is that the school district will perform those background checks, will reimburse the school district, and the school district will provide us with those background checks, so that we can rely on those background checks instead of performing our own. There is some question as to whether the Michigan State Police that facilitate those background checks will allow the school district to share those results with us. If they can do so, they're required to do so under this agreement. If they can't do so, the city will have to go to the additional expense of performing those background checks ourselves. That really sums up all of the fine-tuning that's occurred since the agreement was first presented to City Council and provided in your packets.
Councilman Goodman, Councilman Rutherford?
So just to clarify, have there been any changes between last meeting and this one, in terms of the document?
Well, yes, because we didn't share any of the changes since this was first put in your packet. And so all of the changes that I've summarized are new to you since last week, because last week's MOU was no different from the one originally provided, I don't believe.
Thank you.
But those, those are the sum total of all of the changes compared to the version that you were first provided with, what, two, three weeks ago now?
Okay. Because I, because I remember like looking through that document. I know whatever residents have also looked through that document, they may have seen like some of the differences from that document to this one, and just wanted to make sure that everything that you just said is, just clarifying that that's the summary of all of it.
Absolutely.
So thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Councilman Rutherford?
What is the total amount that we're going to be spending using their buildings? That's my first question.
The only amounts that we're responsible for are the cost of background checks for the additional staff that are involved, which is the staff that will be providing. That is the coaches primarily, and dance instructors. We will be responsible for referees, but the referees probably won't even be in the schools, because the games, the schools are going to be used as practice facilities for basketball. The games will be played at United Wholesale Mortgage, so that really does not have much to do with this agreement. We will have to provide reimbursement for janitorial costs, if those janitorial costs are incurred by the school district as a result of us using the facilities, and would not have otherwise been incurred by the school district. Mostly, we think that's probably not going to be the case, because most of the time, the school district already has janitors or custodians cleaning the facilities in the evenings, even if we weren't in there. And so the total estimated cost is hard to know with absolute precision, but it will, I think it's fair to say, be less in all likelihood than $10,000.
Okay. So my follow-up question is, we're doing this memo of understanding to create a partnership, yet the meat and potatoes is still not in there, and is that going, for me? What I'm, what I was looking for in this document was to talk about Whizner. It ain't in here. What are we doing? Like, it's nothing in, like, I don't get it.
This partnership agreement is about utilizing the existing active elementary schools in the district as locations- schools in the district as locations for specific forms of programming. That's what this has always been about since the first time we provided this to city council. Separately, we're talking about some sort of arrangement, acquisition of the Wisner School as a permanent, long-term community center for the city, including for purposes of youth recreation. But that was never the intention of this memorandum of understanding. That is a separate document that we've also had meetings with the school district about, but we were never intending for that to be part of this. This is specifically about utilizing the six, I think, total elementary schools that are currently operated by the school district.
Okay. Thank you for understanding. Thank you.
Councilwoman James.
Okay. So just to clarify, you know, my understanding is the, this memorandum of understanding allows the cities, the city will have the responsibility for developing these sports programs. It will be city staff in the elementary schools recruiting elementary students to take part in these various teams that are going to be formed. So basically, the school district does not, the partnership with the school district is not that their folks will necessarily be involved, but that they have agreed to this agreement. Is that clear? Is that what is taking place?
That's exactly right, if I may, Mr. President. That's exactly right. So the partnership involves the school district allowing the city the use of the elementary schools without paying rent. And the city providing staffing and organizing the actual programming. At least for the rest of November and December, the plan is to provide girls' basketball and dance classes in the elementary schools. That programming will be different in the winter and spring, but the game plan is for the rest of November and December to provide girls' basketball and dance. And I think longer term, this is an important first step towards more robust collaboration, including the Wisner School issue, but that was never intended to be included in this. And this is really about allowing us to bring recreational programming to where many of the young people are. And the young people are, among other places, at Pontiac School District school buildings because that's where they attend school throughout the day. And so these programs will be offered immediately after the end of the school day at the elementary schools so that we can make sure that more schoolchildren in Pontiac are utilizing some of these opportunities.
On follow-up, Councilwoman James, you have the floor.
Yeah. It's a tremendous opportunity and win-win because we have so many single-parent families in our city, you know, and with hard-working parents who are out there on jobs, and now this afford them the opportunity to be able to, for their kids to be in a safe environment, staying at the school for these after-school activities that would probably keep them actively involved until their parents are available. So it really is a win-win, you know, I think for the city, for the school district. I'm really, really excited about it. And I, you know, again, this is a first that we have had this kind of collaboration between the city and the school district, and to hear about the fine points of law, that you had to get lawyers involved, these are the kinds of things that have to happen.
Right.
You know, to make something robust. And so it's a great start, and I am really, really looking forward to it. Again, it's a win-win for the city.
I echo that sentiment, and I salute the school district, the school board, the superintendent, their administration for their receptivity
Yes.
to this, this new collaboration.
Yes.
Hearing no further discussion. What is before us is adoption of the resolution approving the memorandum of understanding between the city and school district for after-school youth recreation activities in Pontiac's elementary schools. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Six Y's, no N's.
That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. We are now at public comment. Councilman Rutherford, do you have the clipboard?
Yes, sir, I do.
Who's the first request for public comment?
Karen Jurgensen.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and wonderful council. Looking at this itinerary, and you've been accomplishing so much since you've all started in January, we're very proud of you and very thankful. I'm representing Pontiac City Art Theater, and we're at 47 North Saginaw Street in historic downtown Pontiac. I just want to reiterate a lot of wonderful things that are coming up, but before I do that, I want to digress for a moment to say that last Friday, we had Oakland University's jazz band at our facility, and we had well over 100 people there, and I would say 99% of them had never been to Pontiac before. They were so impressed, they want to come back, they had a wonderful experience, downtown was alive, it was fantastic. So hats off to Pontiac, we did a great job. Tomorrow, we have the Jokes on You comedy troupe, and that is being hosted by Irma Hayes. The doors open at 6:30, and the show starts at 7:30, and the tickets are $15. Starting Monday of next week, we will be doing jam sessions with professional musicians. We'll be starting that at 7 o'clock in the evenings. And then, very proud to have Alexander Zonchak and James Lloyd return to Pontiac City Art Theater again. Tickets are going fast, I mean it. We are only seating 100 people, and that is November 12th. Tickets are $30. Very honored to have the movie props from the documentary on Boba the Boat, A Detroit Fairy Tale. So if any of you want to come see it, I have the boat and 24 of the dolls from the movie. We will have our first movie on Friday, the 18th of November, and we'll be doing that until the 27th. Thursday evening, starting November 17th, we will be starting our collaboration with the Roylooke Main Art Theater and bringing art films to Pontiac. So our doors will open at 7:00, and movies will start at 7:30. And of course, I want to mention again that we will have Quincy Jones, Quincy Jones, Quincy Stewart presenting his concert on December 30th. I do want to just say that one of the biggest obstacles for our downtown still remains parking, and we had a number of people that came to our concert from OU, and unfortunately, they ended up at the parking lot and paying $25 for parking. So that was not a good experience, and I think the sooner that we can get going on getting metered parking downtown, it would be very, very helpful and appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrice Wright?
Every time I step to this podium, I'm nervous, and I'm generally not nervous. That clock makes me nervous. I want to thank the council for this opportunity. My name is Beatrice Wright. I am a lifelong resident of the city of Pontiac. I am a 41-year educator from Pontiac. I came to introduce myself to my precinct, Precinct 3. I am the precinct delegate for Precinct 3, and I want to encourage my precinct voters to make sure you get your absentee ballots back to the city clerk or into a drop box. Do not mail that absentee ballot, and I want to encourage those of you who will come to the polls to do that. I also want to recognize a couple of organizations that I work for. One I volunteer with, one is the, Mr. Coleman and his food bank. I understand he was recognized by you. I want you to continue to give him support. I also am a member of Midnight Golf, which is out of Detroit under the direction of Renee Flucker, who has introduced the game of golf to thousands of youngsters while also teaching them about the game of life, if you will. And she's given, or we have given, millions of dollars in college scholarships. Now, the reason why I came here was not, what really motivated me down here was to talk about the links of Crystal Lake. I am, unbeknown to many of you, an avid golfer. I have golfed since I was about seven years old. My dad was a golfer, and he instilled in me and my brothers and sisters the game of golf, of which only two of us, there were seven of us, there are six of us now, but only two of us golf. But something happened at the golf course that just irks me to no end. A company called Detroit Works filed a complaint against the golf course. Detroit Works is a company right off Bagley, filed a complaint, and a judge, in his lack of wisdom, put a temporary injunction against the golf course and closed up two holes. Now, I think that's a travesty since hundreds of people live around the golf course, and nothing was given to them. Why did this company get special dispensation? I understand it was in Judge Michael Warren's, he is the judge that put that injunction out there, and he is running for election to the appellate court against Seema Patel. Please vote for Seema Patel. Thank you very much.
We must.
You can't do that.
We want to share that we can't have public comment be advocacy for or against candidates or ballot proposals, but thank you for that informational update.
Joanne Green?
Okay, I'm Joanne Green, District 2, 18 years. I want to thank Brett Knitbliss for representing his district, District 2, against that parking lot. Shame on you, District 1, for not representing your citizens. It's a shame, but thank you, Brett. Number two, about spending. We're just going to talk about our brochures. There's a company that does our brochures that cost us, this brochure right here probably was $10,000 at least. The company that does this brochure did your advertising, yours, yours, a number of people. I could not find a check on our check register paying these people. Where is it hidden? I called Purchasing. Purchasing, I asked if they had a contract. She said, "I have to do a Freedom of Information Act to find out if they have a contract." Now, something's wrong here because I worked in business for years. I know how much this costs. You talk about wasting money? It's in your face, okay? And I'm not going to name the company, I'm going to get more information, we'll do that later. Another thing, Harrington Air Elementary School has these big temperature things. They spent $38,000 on a temperature machine. City didn't want them, but the school district bought them. Kids didn't use them, they're in the corner now. $38,000 each. Plus, now, what do we have? The school district is putting in chargers for electric cars. Yes, DTE did put in $2,000 each, but they cost a heck of a lot more than that. That's where our tax dollars are going. So don't try to act like we need more money. We are spending money in a sad way, and our children can't read, but they can charge their electric car.
Bill H. Maxine?
Mr. Maxine, it's you.
Good evening, Mr. and Mrs. Pontiac, community at large, and governors. Here are my two activists tonight. I'll go back to a few words that I had spoken about, the district court eastern district awarding $38 million. I immediately looked into this after Angela Powell, community liaison, made her appearance here and passed this literature out, tested Oakland County. Please wait, someone will get with you in a minute, ask questions. Please wait, like DTE and any other company, consumers. Now, to have a solution for that, I asked for some volunteers to come to the library between the hours of 12:00 and 2:00 on Mondays, sit down and talk to our seniors and others who really don't understand. I'm still reading this. Then on Friday night, pardon me, Friday, at noon, it's not a meeting, come to the Bourne Center. We have volunteers. Look, we know seniors lost their homes and moved into, what, some type of respiratory care? We know that. Ironically, today, two young people, under the age of 45, under the age of 42, I think they are, I lost my home. Not only seniors, so what I'm saying is that this is my focus, number one. Now, going to find out through sitting around the table, and I know there's a lot of questions because DTE and consumers will not answer you at Oakland County, and I have some retired school teachers and a couple of volunteers, MSWs, who will do this. We need to help our seniors understand this. You either opt out by the 15th of October, or you have December of 15 to get the paperwork. So we are having 150 applications made and wrote a grant for it. I write real good grants for the community, really good grants. Michigan senior advisory council, and we'll have enough staff, we'll have enough papers and money to pay for our campus, but council, your seniors still don't understand, they're hurting. You could talk all day, whatever, pass all the resolutions, but Mr. and Mrs. Pontiac, who cannot afford to stay in their home, lost their homes. They need explanations. No one has contacted me as much as I've come forward at the council about anything. It's really not about me, it's what I stand for. United States military
That includes your time.
Personal integrity.
That includes your time.
Thank you.
Florence Tiffey?
I'm from Pontiac, and Pontiac too. You know, I don't live in the city of Pontiac anymore. I grew up in Pontiac, Pontiac schools. I won't tell you all that, but I'm Pontiac, I'm for Pontiac schools because I worked there for 38 years, and I lived in Pontiac, grew up in Pontiac, went to Pontiac schools, graduated from Pontiac Central, went to Michigan State. Pontiac was a great school district under Dana P. Whitmer, and under nails and bustling, it fell. Now, my time is almost up, and I would like to say that I talked with a longtime veteran that's here. He was in the Army. What's your name, sir? You told me your name.
Sir, right here.
You might want to take the microphone, Ms. Tiffey, so they can hear you at home.
I couldn't help but be impressed with a veteran that's coming to work with the city. Oh, I'm sorry, I did the lipstick.
It's your time, Ms. Tiffey.
Quickly, so I can say something. I'll say something while you keep thinking. I have been going around town lately, and I've been going down Saginaw, downtown. I noticed that half of Saginaw downtown is an entertainment district, and the other half, all the buildings are for sale. half, all the buildings are for sale. I said, "Why? Why half for sale downtown and the other half is an entertainment district?" Come down here and look yourself, all those buildings. Okay, you ready? Maybe I talk too much, but I'm glad that you're here, and I just wanted to recognize you for your service and to also be here, you know, that night, and I imagine it wasn't easy for you, but thank you for your service in the Army. Thank you, everyone.
I was in Germany shortly after the war when Russia put up the wall in Berlin.
Thank you, Mr. Sabish.
With the Third Armored Division. It was pretty serious business at that time.
Our next speaker is Darlene Clark.
Thank you for your service, Mr. Sabish.
Good afternoon, councilpeople. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. God, he just took my attention. I have a question here. I'm from District One. I want to elaborate on what Mr. Carrington said last week about code enforcement and knocking on your door. A lot of residents called me. Their concern is not, they're not afraid of code enforcement, not at all. What the concern is that code enforcement, we want to have more input, and this question is for Major Grimal, is how much pressure are you putting on the big businesses and landlords in obtaining their properties? We have a big problem, especially with the landlords. Lombardo, he's one of the top number one person with over 300 pieces of property who's a terrible landlord. I'm not nervous about speaking through him, just cautious because of the germs, okay? So please address that if you can. Another thing that the residents would like to know, at your three-minute speech, is it possible that you can tell each person what you have done for that week or your intentions for that week in our district? We understand that you're not, there's no relationship, there's no communication, and you ask the input of the residents. We'd like to see on your end, what have you done for that district? So if you've done the trees, if you cut the branches off the sidewalk, what have you done for that district altogether? Also, what have pressures that was put on the landlords for these empty school buildings, for these empty homes that's there that's having all this plight? Another thing that we're concerned about, too, is that, hold on one second. Oh, that's it, that's it.
First of all, President McGinnis, I'm going to say something, and next week, hopefully, because you're meaning probably next week, probably be on a Thursday because there's an election next Tuesday. We had an opinion from John Clark, from Geralmarco, in regards to speaking about political issues because this is the platform for that. If you can't speak it here, you can't speak it in church. You can't go out. So you can speak on candidates. And what makes me say that to you in the body, once you guys posted that flyer about who we can vote for a millage, you broke your rules. So why can't we break our rule? So I'm going to sit here and I'm going to tell all my constituents, please don't vote for the millage for the city of Pontiac that's on the ballot. That's just to my constituents. You got to practice what you preach. We never send a ballot out. You don't send out what your opinion is. Allow the people to speak for themselves because you know what? We're getting ready to go through some hard times. This time next year, we don't know. A lot of people that own these homes with that millage going up, and I'm just going to say it because that's who I am. I spent four years on a council with administration mishandling money. Now you telling me that I damn it need to pay for it, excuse me, for the mistakes that they made? That's what you're going to do to the residents? What are we going to get for that money? What are we getting for our money right now? Now, I'm talking as a resident. I live right here. What are we getting for our money? South Boulevard, I seen an accident down there two weeks ago. I did inform the mayor about it. I took a picture of it. I'm pretty sure if they didn't get hurt or killed. We asked, I asked you as a council, what can you do for that light? It is a nightmare. That's the talk of the town. That South Boulevard interest, what are you guys waiting on, somebody to die? It's bad. I told you it was first me, but I know you didn't care about me. Now that I took a picture, I sent it to the mayor. I'm going all the way up to Lansing to the governor, to Whitmer, when his election over. If I get some people to protest, to put a light there, because one of those people could be my son, someone you know, because we just need a light. If M.D. won't put a light there, why do we want them putting $3 million downtown? Come on now, what's a light to save a person's life? Second of all, I'm going to mention about the brochures. I see the brochures, I'm like, they're rolling. They're rolling. That's what I seen in the last administration. I spent my four years on the council calling the administration out. That's just who I am. I'm going to call this one out when I see things is wrong. It's not because I'm being judgmental, it's because, guess what? The people here, I live with them, they're suffering from your indiscretion. You sat here and voted for the school district and don't even have all the forms in front of you. That's something we did with the last mayor that I stopped doing early. You never vote for something that you got it in writing because in writing don't mean anything because you'll probably never see it. And another thing, Ms. Green, you are so right. The kids at Pontiac schools can't read, most of them. They're so behind. They're so behind. I know everybody want to pretend everything is rosy-dozy in this city. It's not. We got issues here. Address them. And stop saying yes to everything. Speak for your constituents because everybody don't agree with everything every time.
Our last speaker will be Larry Jasper.
Legislative Council Sharp, I am carrying out the rulings that President Kermit Williams did in the previous council when it came to explicit advocacy for or against candidates or proposals, but if you could provide the council with the, sort of the legal origins of that, so that way we can make sure that we are properly enforcing the state Supreme Court or state constitutional requirement.
So also, the parliament, the former parliamentarian that the last council had, Eleanor C. Ward, also indicated that because, let me get this correct, because of public dollars, you cannot endorse speech or position, election candidates, or issues on the ballot because of the fact that this institution here is paid for by public dollars. So that is the basis behind it.
And so I just want to put that, again, emphasize that so that way if in future years a candidate comes and is campaigning for themselves, we unfortunately have to rule that out of order per state and our council rules and procedures. Now, of course, if that person is running for office and they want to speak in public comment, they have every right to, to give their public comment. If they are a current elected official, they can speak under elected official, but I just want to make sure, since I was carrying out what the previous council leadership was doing, I welcome any further data to that. I apologize. You have the floor, sir.
Good, okay. Hey, guys, missed you. Sorry I haven't been here, but you know, my rules are God, family, business, and my son's minority. I don't know if you guys know that. My whole entire family, my wife is from Mexico. Just to help you out, I'm speaking Mexican, so you understand how the difference is in Spanish. It's no different than us Americans, our slang to England. Mexico is the same kind of thing with actual Spanish. My wife's father was from Spain and her mother was American Indian. With that said, I haven't been here for a while, so I wanted to kind of hold back. I actually came here to talk about the Hadley Amendment and how it's going to really affect the citizens of Pontiac because it will increase taxes. And in doing so, we've got hyperinflation coming around the corner, guys. Right now, we're depleting all our oil, our reserves, and that's what's keeping our low gas prices. It's also what's keeping the food prices at only 20% increase. You're going to see another 10% to 15% increase come of the first of the year. You're going to see gas prices at six bucks a gallon. Nobody here can afford an extra tax dollar. If you need to get extra tax dollars, I suggest you go to the 35-year tax abatement you gave to Bloomfield Park on 400 condominiums that are worth $300,000 apiece, meaning the city would get $10,000 each unit. That would more make up, that's $3 million that you would get from a corporate entity which is getting benefits from the city. And I agree with Councilwoman Nicholson regarding the purchasing agent, the ex-mayor got rid of ours on December of 2019 here in Pontiac, and people started writing $10,000 checks for marketing material, for their friends, 35 different people. You need to keep accounting tight here because that $5,000 goes fast. You just approved a memorandum of understanding with the school. Who's going to pay for the coaches? What is their salaries? Who's going to pay for the uniforms? Who's going to pay for all the applications with the individuals? Who's going to ensure the individuals, the coaches and the referees and assistants that are working with inside the school? You guys are.
Order.
No.
Mr. Jasper has the floor.
And not only that, but who's going to run the coaches? Because I know that principals oversee the coaches. And since the city's now doing it, is the mayor going to oversee the coaches? Who's going to referee with this stuff? I mean, you signed, you did an approval on an amendment of understanding without having written documentation. An attorney will tell you, never sign an agreement without reading it. You don't know what's going on. I'm not saying the mayor's wrong. So don't vote for your raised taxes on that amendment, too, that proposal, too. Vote no, because otherwise you will lose everything. No, that's not the current one. You know that, sir. He told you, you had the one that was old. Nobody else has seen it. It's not on the website.
That concludes your time.
All righty. Well, we haven't got started yet.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Nice seeing you all again.
So Councilwoman Rutherford, that was the last sign up.
Yes, that was.
All right. So public comment is concluded. We're now at City Council Communications, essentially our community calendar until something more robust comes along. Now through January 4th, 2023, Mittens for Detroit is collecting new mittens and glove donations for children, including a pickup site at the Pontiac Community Foundation, 79 Oakland Avenue in Pontiac. Let us help. Tutoring, essay writing, computer skills, financial literacy, resume writing, and interview preparation is Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., held at Pontiac Seventh Day Adventist Church, 182 South Sanford. Salvation Army has their Thanksgiving turkey signups, November 2nd, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and then from 1:00 to 3:00, held at the Salvation Army Pontiac Corps and Wallace-Holland Community Center, 469 Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard South. Please bring a valid Michigan ID, proof of residence, and proof of income. Safe Talk Suicide Prevention Training Opportunity, November 2nd, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m., held at Havenwick Hospital, 1525 University Drive in Auburn Hills. That's presented by Oakland County. Celebrate Dia de los Muertos with a live painting exhibition by artist Fatima Melendez, November 2nd, tomorrow. 7:00 to 11:00 p.m. at Gallery 46, which is located at 46 North Saginaw Street downtown. Jokes on You Comedy Show at the Platt, November 2nd, 7:30 p.m. Tickets $15, and that's Pontiac's Little Art Theater, 47 North Saginaw Street. Care House of Oakland County Care Night Gala, November 4th, 6:00 p.m., held at the Treasury, 30 North Saginaw Street in Pontiac. For more information, visit carehouse.org. Identify Your Dream Foundation presents Bow Ties and Jeans Charity Ball, November 5th, from 8:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m., held at Lafayette Grand, 1 Lafayette Street, Pontiac. Tickets $40 at the door. The 2022 General Election is held Tuesday, November 8. Polling locations are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. We've got Shrek Jr. from Pontiac Theater 4, performances November 11th, 12th, 13th, 18th, 29th, and 30th. That's at All Saints Episcopal Church, located at 171 West Pike, for the Friday and Saturday shows at 7:30 p.m., the Sunday shows 4:00 p.m. Alexander Zanjak and Friends perform at the Platt, November 12th. Doors 6:30, show 7:30. Tickets are $30, and that's 47 North Saginaw. The Art Experience Glimpse and Glimmer Annual Gala, November 17th, at the Flagstar Strand, 12 North Saginaw Street. The Greater Pontiac Community Coalition Economic Summit, November 18th, 2022, from 8:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., held at Centerpoint Marriott, 3600 Centerpoint Parkway in Pontiac. You can email annporterfield@gpcc1994@yahoo.com to register. Boblo Boats Documentary Showings at the Platt, November 18th, 25th, 26th, 27th. District One Thanksgiving Luncheon, November 19th, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., Bowen Center, 52 Bagley Street in Pontiac. Call 248-758-3017 to register. CNS Healthcare has their 10th Annual Turkey Giveaway, November 19th, 10:00 a.m., held at Pontiac City Hall. First come, first served, while supplies last, again, November 19th. Councilwoman Melanie Rutherford has, on November 20th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., free coke giveaway at the City Hall Parking Lot. Phone number 248-758-3017 to register. On November 26th, Councilwoman Rutherford presents the South Side Carolers, the first rehearsal, November 26th, 3:00 p.m., New Springfield Missionary Baptist Church, 124 Prospect Street, 248-758-3017. The Pontiac Impact Challenge by Thrivant and the Pontiac Community Foundation, from November 28th, 2022, to December 4th, online voting for Pontiac nonprofits. We'll leave it at there, but there is many more written announcements. You can find all of these at the bottom of the City Council Agenda, also available on the city website. Now to the mayor's office for mayor's communication.
Thank you, President McGinnis. So, and I know I bring this up every week, but I do want to just continue to get the word out about our amazing youth recreation and enrichment programming. This is so important for our young people that they be given every opportunity to enjoy and benefit from these programs. And as I've said before, it's not just sports and athletics. We've got those programs, but it's also enrichment activities like art and music and entrepreneurship classes. And I just want to make sure that people are aware of those opportunities and that if you have young people who are your kids, or your grandkids, or nieces, nephews, your neighbor's kids, that you're encouraging them to sign up for these programs. They can do so at pontiacrecreation.recdesk.com. Also, I mentioned this last week as well, but in collaboration with a nonprofit organization, we are encouraging residents to provide feedback for the Economic Development Stakeholder Survey. When we talk about economic development, we really mean community development. When economic development is done right, it's really synonymous with community development. And we want to hear from the most important economic development stakeholders we have, and that's our residents. So please, go onto the city's website. You can do so by going under Departments and then under Community Development, and you can find this survey online. We encourage you to fill it out. It won't take but a few minutes, and we really want to hear from you, our residents, about your economic development and community development priorities. And then lastly, under Communications, we do have our Public Safety Town Hall tomorrow night, Wednesday night, November 2nd, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Bowen Center. This is really, really important, and it's all about public safety in all its forms. It's about reducing violent crime in our community, and of course, we had another tragic event two weekends ago. I just went to a memorial service on Sunday evening for the victim of that tragic crime. But it's also, the town hall tomorrow night is also about trying to make sure that our law enforcement agents are treating residents with the dignity and respect that they deserve. And it's about accountability for law enforcement. We want to make sure that people truly feel safe in the totality of what that means, and that includes making sure people feel safe from street criminals who are perpetrating violent crime, but also that our residents feel safe from law enforcement, and that hasn't always been the case. So this is an opportunity to hear updates from the sheriff's office and importantly, an opportunity to ask questions directly of Sheriff Michael Bouchard and Captain Andre Ewing. We will also have representation from the Anti-Violence Commission. Kano Phillips, who's the chair of the Anti-Violence Commission, will be out of town, but Samino Scott will be providing updates on behalf of the Anti-Violence Commission and fielding questions. We'll also have Angela Powell there in her capacity as the chair of the sheriff's relations team. So it will be a great event, again, tomorrow, Wednesday, November 2nd, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Bowen Center. Please come on out and join us.
With that, your closing comments, Mayor Grimal.
Well, thank you, President McGinnis. First of all, and perhaps most importantly, I want to correct some of the misinformation that was shared by members of the public tonight. The most important way I want to begin by doing so is tonight. The most important way I want to begin by doing so is I want to really be clear about this and emphasize this because several speakers wrongly described this. All of the council members did have the latest version of the memorandum of understanding, the agreement between the city and the school district, before them tonight. They had that in written form. They had an opportunity to review it before they voted on it. What I was simply summarizing was the differences in the form they were, they had in front of them tonight, the form they were given today with all of the updates, and what they were originally given two or three weeks ago. So I was summarizing those updates. But all of the city council members had the up-to-date contract, the up-to-date memorandum of understanding in front of them. All of the details that I mentioned and all the other details that people asked questions about are all detailed in that document that city council had in front of them tonight before they voted on it. So that's very, very important. Also, and as I personally discussed with the member of the public who brought this up, the intersection at the corner of South Boulevard and Woodward is under the Michigan Department of Transportation's control because Woodward, M1, is a state highway. And we do not have the ability as a city to change that intersection or change the traffic signal at that intersection. That is solely up to MDOT. We have all been pleading with MDOT to facilitate a green arrow there at that intersection. And MDOT is, in fact, going to reconfigure that intersection. They're going to change the signalization at that intersection next year. The problem is, we need them to do it sooner. And so we encourage residents to contact the governor's office and to encourage MDOT to do that as soon as possible. To compare that with the reconfiguration of the downtown loop is just misleading because the downtown loop is not being reconfigured until late 2024, and mainly in 2025 and 2026. The intersection at South Boulevard and Woodward is being done before that. It's being done next year. We simply want MDOT to do it even sooner than that because we have some urgency to facilitating traffic flow through that intersection in light of the fact that the Martin Luther King Bridge is closed currently. I also want to emphasize that no taxpayer dollars of any kind, no city resources of any kind, have been used to promote or encourage people to vote in favor of the heavily override ballot proposal that's on the November 8th ballot. I don't know what flyers one of the members of the public is referring to, and I follow up with her and try to get more details about that. But we have not utilized any city resources of any kind to support or encourage people to vote in favor of that heavily override. In contrast, we've gone out of our way to facilitate objective information about what that proposal is about. And we've done that at the urging of members of the public who have had questions or wondered what exactly it means. And we've done that on several occasions, not just tonight. Obviously Deputy Mayor Stevens went into great detail tonight about it. But our city treasurer, Portia Prater, discussed it in great detail a couple months, two or three months back now. And we've had information posted on the city's website as well, and that was referenced by Deputy Mayor Stevens a week ago. So we've gone out of our way to provide objective, balanced information. We have not in any way, using city resources, in any way promoted that ballot initiative. I want to be crystal clear about that. I also want to emphasize, because at least one member of the public tonight asked questions about the school district and the school district's use of funding, we are not the school district. And the city government is a completely separate governmental entity from the Pontiac School District. We have no control over the schools. We have no control over their spending. Just as the mayor and city council are elected by the voters and operate the city government, the school district is operated by an entirely separately elected school board that is itself elected directly by the voters. So if people have concerns about any practices of the school district, whether it's instruction or the spending of money, we encourage you to go and speak at school board meetings because they are the sole decision makers when it comes to school district affairs. And lastly, I want to emphasize that we take very seriously enforcing the city's codes against all property owners, but especially and particularly against landlords and slumlords. And they are the ones who have been the primary focus of our blight enforcement because they are the biggest perpetrators of blight in the community, and they're the ones whose actions have the worst detrimental impact on our residents. And so we take enforcing our code against them particularly seriously and have been very vigorous in going against the blight that slumlords are responsible for. By way of a couple of examples of actions against landlords in the community, Rossshire Court, which has been publicly mentioned many times in these chambers, has incurred and we've levied tens of thousands of dollars of fees against Rossshire Court, its owners, just this year. And the same is true for Maynard Court. Tens of thousands of dollars have been levied against Maynard Court. So we take holding landlords accountable very, very seriously, and we'll continue to do so.
Thank you. City Clerk Doyle, your closing comments.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, just where everyone is aware, next week, Tuesday, is Election Day. So the council will not have a meeting next Tuesday. The meeting will be on Thursday, November 10th, at 6:00 p.m. The clerk's office will have extended hours leading up to the election, starting on Friday. We're open from 8:30 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. Both the Saturday, November 5th, and Sunday, November 6th, we're open from 10:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. Monday, November 7th, we're open from 8:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. Monday, November 7th, is the last date that you can actually request an absentee ballot if you don't already have your absentee ballot. If you don't have your absentee, if you don't request your absentee ballot by Monday, November 7th, then you will have to go to the polls on Tuesday. On Election Day, Tuesday, November 8th, polls will open up at 7:00 a.m. and close at 8:00 p.m. The drop boxes will close on Monday, with the exception of the one that's right out here outside of City Hall. All absentee ballots must be returned by 8:00 p.m. on Election Day to the clerk's office in order to count. Again, we must receive your absentee ballot by 8:00 p.m. on Election Day. I think it was mentioned earlier, and I would concur. At this point, return as opposed to putting your absentee ballot in the mail, return it to one of our drop boxes or directly to the clerk's office. Last week, I talked about the Pontiac Votes Community Challenge, and just to give the council an update, just within one week of where we were as returns for absentee ballots, because that's the only thing we can track right now, District 5 is in the lead. So District 5, last week, on October 25th, only 41%, 41.9% of the ballots from District 5 have been returned. As of this week, 57.2%. So that's a 15.3% increase. So I encourage all council members to get involved, encourage your residents to return their absentee ballots as soon as possible. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Clerk Doyle, for those closing comments, and we salute you and the employees and volunteers with the City Clerk's operations. We know it's a lot of work and a long day on November 8th, so we wish you Godspeed. We are now at City Council closing comments. Because District 5 has had such a strong showing, we'll start closing comments with Councilman Parker.
Thank you, Brother President. I want to thank Pastor Desro for her coming. I want to continue to ask everyone to pray for Pastor Estrada and his family. Certainly, our prayers go out to him for his loss. And other than that, I have no comments. Have a great day.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kathleen James, District 4.
Yes, I have a couple. We had our District 4 Community Council meeting on last Thursday night. It was our first in-person meeting, and it was really a great meeting. Want to thank our mayor, Mayor Tim Grimal, for showing up and being able to speak and address the questions that the residents had. We also had Mr. McIntyre from Code Enforcement, and we had a representative from the community policing unit who was also there. So it was a very, very good meeting. For November, we voted to meet early, so tentatively, the District 4 Community Council meeting will be on November the 10th, as opposed to the fourth Thursday. It will be the second Thursday of the month, but we're still in the process of confirming that. So we will be meeting in November at an earlier date, and we will not be meeting in December at all. So I want to thank everybody for coming out. It was really a great meeting, and it was great to begin to meet in person some of the wonderful residents of District 4. So we are, our motto is, "We are building community," and I can really see that taking place. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Melanie Rutherford, District 1.
Good evening. We came up with a District United can never be defeated. Seriously, it came from our meeting that we had Saturday for District 1 at the Alley Cat. What was so impressive to me was the 30-plus people who attended. It's one of my best meetings I've had. We had old, young. We've had children who wanted color and do crayons. And that's the synergy that we need to move our district forward. What I liked the most about our district meetings, I said, you know what, instead of just issuing out the community project worksheet, we're going to do it on this board. What do you want to see in the District 1 community? Some of the things they said was a newsletter. So I said, hey, guess what? We'll do a District 1 newsletter in January. Another thing was from Mr. Muscavelli, he wants flowers on the South Boulevard. He's also doing our Christmas tree lighting, November the 26th, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. November 26th, from 6:00 to 8:00, where we're going to light up the whole South Side so everybody can have some South Side pride. Another thing we talked about was having events to increase communication between the age groups. And that is why the Christmas Carol thing is so important. Anybody can be a Christmas Carol. If you can ring a bell, you can be a Christmas Carol. If you can say jingle bell, you can be a Christmas Carol. It's an opportunity for District 1 to get together and have some fun. And we have it at one of my favorite people's church, Pastor William Parker, because I asked him, could we do it? And that's how we do a community engagement. And I know he announced it, but I want to announce it again. If you know anybody that need a free brand-new Coke, we're doing a District 1 Coke giveaway. We're doing it November the 20th, right at City Hall. You come on down. I know, don't worry about it. I got it. And last thing is, I've heard so many complaints about, nobody wants to have a meeting at Alley Cat. So I changed it for November so that we can have a District 1 fellowship dinner and lunch. I mean, it's real soul food. I ain't cooking it, but Lily Breeze is. And the reason why is because it gives you an opportunity to talk the talk and walk the walk. You say you want a best district, come on down. Let's have some fun. I say all this enthusiasm because at the end of the day, a District United can never be defeated. We also have November the 12th, the Bloomingdale Estates is having their meeting at the Capitol House. I want to make sure I announce that. But the last part of my whole thing was what happened on Sunday. I have to give a shout out to the District 1 community group, Sonya May, Sophia May, Mr. Greg Muscavelli, Wendy Gordon, Claudia Buckley, to name a few. We had 300-plus kids come through. We know that because we counted all the hot dogs we gave away. We gave away everything, and we put it all on the floor, and it was a District 1 celebration. And I lost a couple of dollars to a dance contest. Overall, let me tell you, District 1, we are moving forward because a District United can never be defeated. And I thank you for making me your councilwoman, and I thank you for this opportunity today. And on that note, I say, good night.
Councilman Brett Nicholson, District 2.
Well, we didn't have a dance contest in District 2, but we did have a Halloween decorating contest. So congratulations to Sean and Pat, who took first place for that contest, and a big thank you to Sue Sinclair for organizing, Zach Curtis for judging, and then Lacey Kraut for spreading the word with some flyers on doors. And, you know, this cold, wet weather, that's not easy, and it's much appreciated getting the word out. Wanted to build off of the mayor's comments as it relates to landlords and also pay a debt of gratitude. We have, over the last few months, been dealing with a very problematic landlord in District 2 on Miami Street, and they've moved in and allowed some squatters to be in the space. There was drug use, we believe is probably prostitution, just really taking bad care of the property and making a mess of things, up all night, police there every night. The administration, you know, put all of their resources together, got very creative and found out, found a couple of ways, and even got a judgment to vacate that property. And they've moved out. So things are peaceful on Miami Street tonight, and I really appreciate that. I don't know if you have any idea, I mean, we had residents staying in hotels, and that is, it's tremendous because it's not an easy thing to do, especially in short order. We got the news, we tried a few different tactics, and, you know, supporting the property owner and then the property owner not supporting us in kind, we were able to then go to Plan B and executed it perfectly. And it's, again, a quiet night on Miami Street, so I really appreciate that. As it relates to Rossshire Court, it doesn't just end with the fines, that, you know, we are very aggressively going to the bonding company and trying to get those dollars that the city is owed. And if you aren't aware, this council, at the beginning of our term, did make drastic changes to the process by which someone can get a property, bonding the property out of a condemned status. Back with previous administrations, that dollar amount that they put up as a bond was meaningless. It didn't, it doesn't do anything to be able, it doesn't even take a couple windows out of a building, you know, in this case. And these are huge properties, tremendous amounts of dollars it's going to take to take them down. So thank you, administration, for continuing to pursue that aggressively. We need every single dollar to be able to take down as much of that property as possible. While we have partnered in District 2 very well with our new code enforcement officer, Mr. Clarence Cohen. He's been amazing, very responsive, very thoughtful, collaborative with Jack McIntyre. It's just a completely different experience as it relates to code enforcement, and they're being very creative and very thoughtful. And when we partner with them and we tell them what our goals and objectives are, then we work together, and we really have been able to be collaborative. Just two dates coming up. November 10th is Thursday. November 10th is our Personnel and Finance Subcommittee. 2:00 p.m. Council Conference Room will be going over two months of financials in that meeting. Monday, November 28th, is our final District 2 Advisory Group meeting at Golden Walsh at 7:00 p.m. We are not meeting in December, so November is our final meeting. Bring cookies. That's the word.
Thank you. Councilman Mikhail Goodman, District 3.
Good evening, everyone. So I do not have very happy Halloween things to talk about because I do not have time to do them, unfortunately. As some of you know, I work doing civic engagement work for nonprofit out of Pontiac. So my entire day in and day out work, besides helping run the city and doing my job as a councilperson, is working heavily for many different things up and down the ballot, voter education work especially. And the key thing that I want to say here is to re-highlight something that the clerk said, please vote. For the love of God, please vote. We will not be in city council chambers next Tuesday, as has been stated. Please go vote. Pontiac has one of the lowest, if not the lowest voter turnout in the state of Michigan. As a community that has as much influence as we used to and still do, I need us to vote. We can make or break elections, and I'd rather us be able to learn how to do that earlier on than when we need to do it and mobilize and maybe not successfully do it. So please go vote. The second thing on top of that is, as a person who does voter education work for a career and has done it for years before I started getting paid to do it, educate yourself on what is on the ballot. Up and down, front and back, partisan, nonpartisan, ballot initiatives, judges. Because as we've learned, all of those things are very important. We look at the top of the ticket, we look at the governor's races, and we do that because there's a lot of celebrity involved in it. But when you go down further, there are the people who make the decisions that you talk about that are much closer to home, these things that are on the ballot. In the state of Michigan, we have the opportunity as citizens to put essentially whatever we want that we can get supported on the ballot. We have a very specific, unique position in being able to do that. And again, not to advocate for anything that is on the ballot, I encourage you to do everything you can to educate yourself. Do not allow signs, do not allow people to misinform and influence you. As a person who has driven around, there are a lot of religious organizations that have a certain sign out in their property that I personally do not agree with because of my education on a certain ballot proposal. But with all of that to say, please- But with all of that to say, please, do your own research, or ask someone who you trust to further go over this information. As a person who's on city council in Pontiac, as a person who's been doing politics since I was 16-years-old, reading and writing legislation, I've had multiple friends text me and call me, asking about these things. And I will give them the information, not as I want to give it to them, but as it is on there. And I think that is one of the most important things you can do. So, going into next Tuesday, on Election Day, you have time between now and then to educate yourself, have someone help educate you, or find the information. But I would love it to see everyone go vote next Tuesday, because there is just more than, again, the top of the ticket on the line. There are 1,001 races, and 1,001 consequences that are decided by elections. And if we have the opportunity to hold our own future in our hands, regardless of what the city is doing or not, we need to make sure that we are as well-equipped as humanly possible, to make sure that we fight for our interests and that of our community. And with that, I say, "Good night."
Thank you. I'm Mike McGinnis, District 7's councilperson. I want to make sure the community knows that the next Economic Development Housing and Planning Subcommittee is the first Monday in November, 9 a.m., which this month is November 7th, 9 a.m. in the legislative conference room. All are welcome and invited. Reminder, as was shared a few times tonight, our next city council meeting will not be on a Tuesday. It's Election Day, so we don't want to impose on what the clerk's office has to do. So, the next regular city council meeting will be Thursday, the 10th, at 6 p.m. The next District 7 East Side Community Meeting is Monday, November 14th, 7 p.m., Prospect Missionary Baptist Church, which is at 351 Prospect Street. That runs from 7 p.m. to 9 p.m. All are welcome and encouraged. In recent days, we've had success getting potholes patched, because the weather has been holding out, and I, means that the more substantial hot patch has been able to happen, per my understanding. And so, I want to thank DPW in the city's operations for really swiftly getting on that. And that's not just limited to District 7. I know I submitted something about Johnson Street, they were out the next day. It kind of straddles the District 3, District 1, District 2 border, and I just drive on it every day. And I just, I'm really grateful that they were on it literally that next day. Some right-of-way dumping has been resolved, and that's essentially something that's left either in the street, or on a sidewalk, or in between the sidewalk and the street. We had a few hotspots in District 7 in recent weeks that their crews were able to handle that very quickly. There is a lot of demand for trees that are in the city's right-of-way to be either trimmed or removed, or if they've been removed in the past, for the stumps to be grinded out. And so, I just want the community to know that they are working through that list. You are, by all means, welcome to contact City Hall, City Council, we can help ensure and verify that your address is on that list, or if you need new action, let us know. So that way, we can make sure, especially in, on our east side in District 7, that those areas that need addressing, even if it's been a minute, they get that attention and that love from city resources. With that, is there a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting? So moved. Support. It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson, supported by Councilman Goodman, that we adjourn this evening's meeting. Hearing no discussion. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford? Six A's, no names.
I want to welcome the city's new communications director on day one, Paula Bridges, happy November 1st. That, that motion-